Okay, that's a hot.
Mine's okay.
Okay, we're gonna, that might be it if you're hearing that TV 30, that sounds better. Okay. I think that's, yeah, we'll try that. Okay. Sorry about that. All right, with that, we will call the meeting to order. Welcome to your Pleasanton City Council meeting. Today is July 15th due to the technical difficulties at 7:02 PM. And with that, if I can please have a pledge of allegiance, if you can please rise, Councilmember Testa, please.
Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And can we go ahead and have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Iker.
Present.
Gatos.
Present.
Nybert.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
Mayor Balch.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a full agenda tonight, so I will do our best to try to work us through it. But if we can try to be focused and concise on our comments, that'd be great to keep the city's business moving forward. And I also wanted to just mention, congratulations to our new Assistant City Manager for her new position on the, DAS 2, I guess we'll call it, I don't know. So congratulations. Okay, can we have a report out in closed session, please?
Mayor, there's no reportable action.
Thank you very much. Can we please see if there's any agenda amendments by staff at this time?
Thank you, Mayor, no changes tonight.
Okay, are there any agenda amendments by any of my fellow colleagues at this time?
No.
Seeing none, we'll proceed with the agenda as posted. And with that, we're going to be moving to the consent calendar. The items listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and may be enacted by one motion. If discussion is required, that particular item may be removed from the consent calendar to be considered separately. The consent calendar is comprised of items number one through 21. We have several speakers on consent, so why don't we start with, are there any questions of my fellow council members related to consent? Councilmember Gatos, any questions on consent?
Yeah, just a couple, thank you so much. I had inquired earlier to the city manager and I wanted to just acknowledge that we had this conversation, that there was a transportation grants in item number four. I had inquired to see whether any of those grant funds would be possibly used for, to fund the train quiet zone prioritization. Could you just address that for me?
Sure, I'll ask our city traffic engineer, Mike Tesano, if he's still in the building. Sounds like he's in the side room. He'll be popping out here and he can respond to that. Thank you for the question.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Mike Tesano, the traffic engineer for the city. If I understand the question you're asking, if the existing grant for safety action plan could be used to help fund the quiet zone.
Correct.
The transportation safety action plan was a, was a grant fund through the federal Safe House to School Grants with, and when we applied for it, we were very specific in the purpose of the grant and the project that we have an outcome. So in this case, no, we can't use those funds for the safety, or for the quiet zone.
All right, are there other grants that are being looked into for the quiet zone? I'm sure it's something routinely that you do, but, other grants out there that are being, being looked at?
We will look for grants that can help support that now that it's something that's going to move forward.
Great, thank you. That's all I have for you, Mike, appreciate it.
Sure.
Let's see, yes, on, next question on number 16. The, looks like the crossing guard services contract came in under budget. Can you just address how, why and how that happened?
Yeah, we were still soliciting request for proposal for the, the crossing guard program when it went through to the, the budget process. And so it was budget, I believe, for approximately $500,000 and the, the two-year contract did come in less than $500,000 per year.
All right, thank you. Just wanted to acknowledge and talk about that. Other than that, the general question on the health and the human services grants that we're talking about tonight, housing and human services grant, if there were going to be any changes to those or recommended changes to those by the council, how would we go through that matter practically speaking?
Yeah, I think we'd want to understand the, the changes that you'd like to make. We did undertake a more comprehensive and I'll call it rigorous process this time around to try to, I'll use the analogy of spreading it like peanut butter. We were, we were trying to give a lot of grants to a lot of different groups. We sort of scooped it up and, and put it into more impact-related outcomes that we're trying to achieve. And that's how the funding was allocated. There is a deadline of April 15th to submit our grant proposal to the state. So we do need to, or excuse me, to the federal government. So we do need to come to a conclusion tonight, or we'd have to schedule a, a follow-up meeting between now and our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is the 19th of August. So Director of Library and Recreation Heidi Murphy is here, as well as Steve Hernandez, our Housing Services Manager. And we can certainly try to have that conversation, but it'd be challenging at this stage.
Sure. Can you just briefly describe the, I know the analogy, but what, in terms of hours and commission hours that were put into this process, can you just describe that for us so we know, you know, it's something that sort of comes to us to approve, but I know there was time put in ahead of time, so I wanted any members of the public or anybody else to hear what that process was like.
Yeah, thank you for the question. It was fairly comprehensive. So Michelle Croce, our Assistant Director of Library and Recreation is here. She was leading this effort from that department and she'll be able to answer that question.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. The Human Services Commission has spent at least three different meetings plus private time reviewing the grants. The process started back, I believe, in October where information was sent out to applicants. And then as applications were received, there was a, a meeting for applicants where again commissioners attended to answer any questions. There was a joint meeting with the cities of Dublin and Livermore where they spent several hours reviewing all of the grants and listening to applicants and answering their questions. And then the Human Services Commission came back independently in March and held a several-hour meeting, again, reviewing all of the applications. I should back up and also say that they also independently voted and, and, well, not voted, but rated, online, read all of the grants, assigned a score, and then met in March to discuss again with just the commission. It was a little difficult at the time because we knew that there would be some funding changes, both with the federal government funds and the city funds. So there was discussion around what we could possibly do, but without knowing exact dollar amounts, it was a little difficult at that time. But I give major kudos to the commission because they did their best job deciding what they wanted to fund, how much, if possible, they wanted to fund. And they really let staff, they gave staff the best information. For when we had final dollar amounts, we were able to really take their, their guidelines and apply it to where we could.
Thank you. Thank you for the answer. Well done.
Thank you.
That's all I have on consent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Iker, same here. Questions on consent? And I do have speaker cards, so we're just staying on questions, please.
Okay. I do for, in regards to item 15, Automated License Plate Reader Program.
Is this the question related to the process that was used to?
No, I actually have some technical questions that I wanted to ask the PD.
Great. Captain Schlehuber and Chief Tracy Avalar.
This is in anticipation of some public comment that may come out. So what are the benefits of having the Automated License Plate Reader Program?
The City of Pleasanton's had a program for, I believe, since 2018. The program just gathers data that's out there in the public and helps provide investigative leads for criminal investigations. If we're looking for a specific car that was committed in a crime, we can check the data to see where and when that car was in Pleasanton. Also, other benefits it provides is that if there's a listed stolen vehicle or a wanted vehicle that enters the city and passes through one of the cameras, it provides an immediate notice to our officers so they can then take action to potentially stop the vehicle and apprehend any suspects associated.
So in essence, it's the equivalent of having an officer sitting at an intersection and recording plates as they go by and checking them?
Essentially, yes. It's.
But a more efficient way of doing it.
A much more effective way to, to collect that data.
Okay. And I noticed in, in the staff report, two-thirds of our current camera systems aren't, is not working, correctly?
That's correct. Yeah, we had a, a project that was done back at the tail end of 2019, 2020, where we installed our, a very broad system. That was with the Motorola Vigilant was the vendor at that time. Those cameras are now reaching the end of life. And so this is a recommendation through evaluating the legacy system that we have. And then we've also started some, a small project with Flock. And that's just much better technology. And that's the recommendation tonight is to, to sunshine the, the old technology and move, move it all over to Flock, which is a much more advanced contemporary technology. And, and the older technology doesn't fit the needs of the, the department or city anymore.
Okay. In our packet or supplemental packet today, there was a community concern, or somebody raised some concern about Flock's release of data to the federal government or to the public without our authorization. Is that, is that a concern for the police?
That's, that's not a concern. Through the agreement we have with Flock, we, it is, it is the, our data is the City of Pleasanton's data and we control who views that data, where that data is shared. We do not share data with any federal agencies by default. We only share with local and state agencies in, in California.
And is the sharing of data requested or is it automatic?
There is a request that is made when a city begins a relationship with Flock. They will send a, a message to the City of Pleasanton that we evaluate what type of data they're sharing, what type of agency it is, and what that looks like. And if it's, doesn't meet our criteria, we don't, we deny that request.
So the, so we as the City of Pleasanton have a lot of control over the data that's collected and how it's disseminated?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Thank you. And good work on your staff report. Thank you.
Any additional questions of anything else on consent?
That's all I have.
Councilmember Testa?
Nope, no questions.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I have one question. I'd like to go back to item number seven, the Housing and Human Services Grants. Thank you for the discussion you had on, who am I talking to?
Assistant Director Croce is on her way out.
Oh, okay, great.
Do you, oh, you have a question of her?
Yes.
Oh, okay, sorry. I think that was the confusion.
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Appreciate the response to Councilmember Gatos's question. I have further question. And my question relates to the one that was in the supplemental material that we received in regard to the Low Income Housing Fund eligible projects. I know that the response, you know, I, I had a concern with Tri-Valley Haven allocated amount. Because there are nine organizations here that were funded with the money that was available. And seven of them got 100% of their request, requested amount. One got 60% and Tri-Valley Haven got 30%. Yet Tri-Valley Haven has a very high rating. And it says in the supplemental material that while this program received a high rating, there were two other programs that rated higher and funding recommendations were adjusted accordingly. However, that means there were also six organizations that rated lower, five of which received 100%. And so I'm questioning, you know, the, the approach there and wondering why it came out that way. And would suggest perhaps that a better way would be to allocate each one 76% across the board so that they're all receiving the same percentage.
So I am going to ask Steve Hernandez to also join me up here. I oversee the general fund portions of the human service grants. Steve oversees the LIF and CBDG, CDBG. So I think he might be best suited to help with part of that. We'll probably tag team this answer.
Okay, thank you. And this is not to question the, the commission's work in any way.
Good evening, Councilmember Nybert, and I appreciate the question. As Michelle had mentioned, this was a difficult exercise for us simply because we did not have the funding levels for both the general funds, the federal home funds, and as well as the CDBG funds that were coming from the federal government. And so those amounts that we eventually allocated or are recommending to allocate to Tri-Valley Haven were closer to the funding amounts that was recommended by the Human Services Commission to be funded with CDBG funds. Now, the other challenge is that both Tri-Valley Haven programs, they've combined multiple programs into one application. So for example, the family, the homeless family services program has a homeless shelter component as well as the food pantry component. Without CDBG funds or general funds, we could not fund the food pantry program. But we're going to be able to use Low Income Housing Fund to fund the homeless shelter program. And so that was sort of the balance that, and the challenge that we were going up against. I believe you could direct us to provide more Low Income Housing Fund to Tri-Valley Haven to increase that funding level. But the Low Income Housing Funds has restrictions and it would have to be only utilized towards housing-related services. And so we're not even going to be able to fund the Low Income Housing Fund towards their food pantry program anyways.
So the food pantry program is kind of just out of luck? I mean, they're not eligible for consideration here?
Because we can't, we do not have any general funds or CDBG funds to fund it.
Okay, I, I can understand that explanation. Still not very satisfying to me that, that that's the case, but, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there questions on consent?
No.
Okay. So I have a quick question on consent related to item number nine, which is the new fee policy. And maybe Ms. Murphy or staff. Item nine, the, I had continued it from the prior meeting. The staff report definitely got more robust and I appreciate that. Quick couple of questions, right? The first is the fees that we're outlining here, and I'm, I'm looking specifically at the PDA fee that is looked at the prescribed or proposed fee. Are these flexible? For example, you know, the PDA is a different type of organization in my mind and maybe others do or do not agree. But then some of our other sports groups that are centric, right? The PDA has a different type of element in the community. So how does, how does this work? Or how does this, this is a structure for you. Can you elaborate?
Absolutely. So we do currently have MOUs with different groups that operate out of this structure. So for example, our Community of Character group, because we are a supporting partner of them, we allow them to use our facilities free of charge. We have a liaison supporting that group. So there are ways of doing this. And also we, all of our fees allow for staff discretion. So for example, you know, someone loses five library books in a house fire. Our staff have the discretion to waive those fees. They don't have to go through a rigorous process to get that waived. So I think there's a combo there that yes, there are ways for us to work around different groups and our different relationships with those within the fee structure that you're seeing before you tonight.
Okay. And maybe, I, thank you. I think you've answered it, but let me just clarify, right? So the PDA comes forward to us and they ask us for Weekend on Main closures. It's been a typical annual thing almost since COVID occurred and we, we came up with this idea, right? So what I am trying to figure out is, are we, because we fund the PDA approximately half their budget. Are we just transferring theoretically, if, if we wanted to cover the fee that we're charging, are we just going to transfer more and then transfer it back? Or are we going to slice through a bit of bureaucracy here if we? So when we bring back or we see Weekend on Main, this could be a conversation despite the fee policy that we're laying out tonight.
And it could be something that we choose to sponsor alongside them. We do that with the Veterans Day Parade, for example. That's something that the vets primarily run, but we support them and we help fund that activity.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that answers my question on that. And then I, same, same department, I, I know, but item 12, the Don Lewis Harmonic Symphony Public Art. I don't want it to be minimized on the agenda even though it's on consent, so I am going to give you the airtime. Do you mind just mentioning a few things about this project for our community?
Absolutely. This is a phenomenal project. So I think most of you know Don Lewis, but he was an innovator and an educator in music and just a huge contributor to the Pleasanton culture and way of life. And the Harringtons have been donating money to a fund called Another Happy Fund that is specifically for the acquisition of new public art. And this was a dream of theirs. And so it is a series of six instruments that play in harmony together with a specifically crafted for Pleasanton abstract of Don Lewis as the conductor of this orchestra that anyone can play, even me who has no musical talent. You can't play a wrong note. And you can't be in discord with each other. They're always in harmony. So it's beautiful. It's slated to be at DeLuque Park, which is a perfect spot for it. It blends with the music of the Firehouse Arts Center and with the new bandstand concerts in the park. But it's at DeLuque, so it's a little further away, so it won't interrupt them. But just a beautiful, beautiful partnership with the Harringtons, with the Pleasanton Cultural Arts Council, and then the City of Pleasanton.
Thank you. And I'll mention it's going to be in the little curve of the new sidewalk that we've got out there.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes my questions myself. Are there any further questions before I go to public comment by any of my council? Are there any further questions before I go to public comment by any of my councilmembers? Yeah, vice mayor?
Thank you. Just a quick question on the item number three, actions of the zoning administrator. For the item, for the extra mile, I believe that's a Chevron station? This is for a facade color change to all buildings onsite and gas station canopy onsite?
Let me see if Melinda Dennis is here, she'll be able to come up, our Planning and Permit Center manager.
Hello, yes.
Thank you. So, what color?
Question, yes, so it's going from a burgundy-ish shade to a little bit more of a reddish shade. So, again, just, you are correct, it is the Chevron station. They're also eliminated the actual full words, "extra mile," and they're going to just EM.
On the canopy?
No, I'm, apologies, on the building.
Okay. All right, that sounds like a slight change in shade.
Slight, very subtle change, that's correct. Signs are in the same exact location as they are now.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any further questions of my councilmembers before we go on? Okay. So, with that, I do have some public comment speakers related to the consent item, so I like to read this at this time, so I keep on message. This is an opportunity for members to address the council on the consent items, items one through 21. So, we'll just do consent in total. If you would like to speak on another matter that is on the agenda, I ask that you please reserve your comments for when we get to that item. If you do wish to speak on items on consent, you'll fill out a blue speaker card, turn them into the city clerk, they'll be randomly shuffled by the vice mayor to my left, and they make it to me for being called up. I do ask our community members be respectful and help maintain decorum. Speakers may have different opinions, and we want to hear all perspectives and viewpoints. To that end, please know booing, clapping, or other disturbances. If you would like to show your support for what the speaker is saying, please just raise your hand, and we will understand that as additional support. Also, please know that this is your time to be heard. If you do ask questions, those won't necessarily be answered unless taken up by a council member at the conclusion of your time, or at the end of the public comment period related to this. Given the number of cards, speakers are hereby limited to three minutes, and with that, I'll call three at a time, if the two and three could just line up along the wall, so we can move through expeditiously. Mr. Todd Nelson will be followed by Carrie Olds, will be followed by Kelly Cousins. And you're ready, Jocelyn? Okay. Welcome.
Thank you, council staff. I'm speaking on the automatic license plate reader topic. I joined Indivisible, the local chapter, the Tri-Valley chapter, a few months ago, primarily because they had an intention to watch local matters, especially the city, and that was of interest to me. I, I liked being engaged with the city. Through that, I saw some articles months ago about FLOC technology being used to assist ICE agents doing raids. I read through that material, and just put it in my memory bank, and then I saw it here, so I'm speaking on that. The technology itself, I appreciate the intention of the city and the police department to not share that information with federal agencies, but the system works by sharing it with other local and state agencies, and so, that, our data will be accessible to them as they request it. I'm not convinced that it is secure enough. The technology in the packet from FLOC discusses some machine learning software that's proprietary to them. If you understand machine learning or AI, it takes an awful lot of computing power, so it'll certainly be done offsite. So, the data will go offsite, go into the learning algorithms to make whatever proprietary technology they have. As I understand that technology, it's looking for patterns of vehicle locations, and if it sees some pattern that is similar to known criminal patterns, it may assign that license plate to be a likely criminal. And for me personally, that crosses the line between having benefits for safety and security to crossing over my fundamental constitutional rights. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We're taking all the consent at the same time, and then we can come back. Carrie Olds will be followed by Kelly Cousins, will be followed by Dan Mortley. Welcome.
Good evening. My, my name is Carrie Olds, I'm the Mills on Wells Program Manager for Spectrum and Community Services, and I came tonight to thank you all for all the work that you put in to try to figure out how to fund our program. It, just as a side note, in June alone, we added 30 new clients in the Tri-Valley, 30 in one month. We have a feeling that that's going to escalate, and so, we are very thankful for all the work that the Human Services Commission put in, the, what the councilmembers are going to do in a bit, to, to decide if those numbers are going to happen that way, and for the work that the city staff does. We do this all together, we can't do it alone, and we're very proud to be, having served in the Tri-Valley for 35 years. And with that, many of you have been able to come out and see what we do, but I just wanted to thank you for the time that you put in to make sure that the nonprofits can still do what they do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kelly Cousins, followed by Dan Mortley, followed by Peter Gates.
Thank you. I know you have a long agenda, so I will be brief, but I just wanted to talk about how much I am grateful for the staff report on item 12, for the Don Lewis ensemble pieces. I think that's a win-win for everybody in the community, and I'm glad that it coincided with the redevelopment of DeLuque Park. So, I, I also want to thank the Harringtons who are here tonight, who have been so generous to the City of Pleasanton. I don't know very many other cities that have this kind of generous donation on a yearly basis, and so, we really get more done when we all work together, and we're very pleased that the Harringtons have brought forward this project, and Pleasanton Council, Cultural Arts Council can, you know, help move that along, and the staff worked very closely with us to have that happen. So, I think that'll be an exciting addition to that park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dan Mortley, followed by Peter Gates. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Dan Mortley with Indivisible Tri-Valley, and I'm speaking about the automatic license plate readers. I appreciate that on the talking points, the discussion of this topic, you've stated that ALPR is not used for tracking purposes related to immigration or reproductive rights. I appreciate that. But, reading some articles about FLOC safety gives me a little bit more concern, the fact that, you know, there is a state law preventing the release of this information to federal law enforcement agencies, and this, the city, I believe, City of Pleasanton is very good about that law. However, in the past month, there have been 100 violations of this law throughout the state of California, and there is a private surveillance group, or an anti-surveillance group, called Oakland Privacy, that is monitoring these requests. When, when inter-agency makes a request for data, they've got to fill out a log. So, there's an anti-surveillance group that's going to be watching what cities like Pleasanton do with this data. So, you know, do I trust my city and my police department to be able to abide by the law of the state of California, to not share sensitive data to federal enforcement agencies to be used for immigration enforcement? Yes, I do. Do I trust the corporate entity FLOC data to do the same? No, I don't. I respect them. Do I expect them to be able to stand up to pressure in the forms of bullying, coercion, and extortion that we've seen from the federal government agencies? No, I don't. But I do expect that from my city and my police department, and I believe them to be able to withstand that pressure and coercion, and we all will be watching you, and we trust you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Peter Gates, this is my last speaker card. If you would like to speak on the consent calendar, please fill out a blue speaker card and bring it forward. Welcome.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. My name's Peter Gates. I have been one of the original homeowners in Oak Tree Farm. I'm going to talk a bit about the landscape maintenance district, and the, not the assessment that you guys are going to vote on for this current budget, but for the following budget, 25, 26. First off, I do also want to thank Matthew Gruber, the city landscape architect, who I've worked with over the past several years on various items for the Oak Tree Farm Landscape Maintenance District. What I would like to see, and I've, I've had conversations with some of my neighbors, as well as with Matt Gruber, is have our involvement in addition to consultants with regard to determining what the landscape maintenance district should involve. So, when you go through that process of, there are, I see that there are, you know, two recommendations to address here, and one is to restore the assessment levels, which is understandable, and then it says a comprehensive assessment review as a second step, engaging outside consultants. That's all well and good, but you do need our input as well. We may want to have less or more, or, or whatever it is. It is the area that we do live in, and we would like to have that as a consideration. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gates, before you go too much, I just wanted to mention that the landscape districts actually have a separate meeting at different times, that starts, excuse me, process-wise before these, so we're kind of near the end for the assessment, but this conversation that you're at would be very welcome at, at the process, and so, we can maybe work to connect that thought. Yes, please, city manager.
If I might, we're, we're always more than happy to work with the community, and I'll make sure that your message gets delivered to Matt Gruber, so as we get into the process, we're touching base and making sure we get that local information as well.
Yeah, I can, and one of the reasons I wanted to thank Matt is, we've already spoken about setting up a neighborhood meeting, and I've reached out to many of the neighbors already, and they're in favor of, of doing that, in order to help provide input. And I may or may not be the single point of contact, but I have talked to Matt about doing that, so that there's some efficiency involved with that.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that's my last speaker on consent. Are there any additional public comment on consent? Please approach the podium at this time, items one through 21. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council. Do we have any further conversation, or a motion, or any action to pull anything off of consent? Still a hot mic, sorry about that. Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve consent.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further comment? Okay, I will just mention that, maybe because I grew up in that process, under item seven, Human Services Grants, I'm not going to disclose all of them, but I do contribute personally to some of these, and I am only a contributor or a donor to them, so just on the advice of what we had gotten in the past. Okay, with that, we have a motion made and seconded. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmembers Eicher?
Aye.
Testa?
Aye.
Gatos?
Aye.
Nybert?
Aye.
Mayor Bolch?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the Don Lewis Harmonic Symphony. I look forward to the, to that being a part of our community. Thank you. All right, with that, we are now proceeding to a meeting open to the public. Typically, at this spot, we would have a proclamation, we don't have one this month, but I did want to take a special moment to thank Mr. Matt Gruber, who's been mentioned earlier, related to his work on Lion's Wayside Park and the community bandstand, which our community has been enjoying very much over the last few weeks. I wanted to just make sure that he knew true appreciation from all of us at the city related to that. I will also mention, it's a huge win for our community, we know we have a few things that we can work on, but just so you know, go and enjoy our new bandstand in Lion's Wayside Park. Okay, so with that, we're going to go to item number 22, public comment on items not listed on the agenda. So, similar to my prior statement, these are for matters that are not on the agenda, and if you do have an item on the agenda, please hold those comments. I do have a few speaker cards. We will stay with three minutes, excuse me, just a small second. So, our first speaker is Sharon Perkarsky, you'll be followed by Shanye Ghosh, followed by Ms. Carrie Olds. Welcome.
Good evening. My comments tonight are my own, and not necessarily those of the Bicycle Pedestrian Trails Committee, of which I'm a member. It was wonderful to see the ribbon cutting of the beautifully renovated Wayside Park, but there was something missing. Where are the bike racks? The most versatile bike rack is an inverted U. The materials for a rack that accommodates eight bicycles would cost only $1,268, plus about an hour's worth of labor to install. If there was enough extra budget to build a parking lot, surely a bike rack was affordable. However, my bigger concern is the sidewalk installed through DeLuque Park. In 2008, Pleasanton entered into an agreement to purchase the old railroad right-of-way through downtown for a transportation corridor. As a result, a half a dozen city master plans, including the Wayside-DeLuque Park Plan, Alameda County Trails Master Plan, and East Bay Regional Parks Trails Master Plan, all show a multi-use regional trail through downtown, with the intent of eventually connecting Sanol and Niles Canyon to the Iron Horse Trail east of Pleasanton. Instead, the city has routinely added vehicle parking through this corridor, with no plans to build the trail anytime soon. It was mentioned in passing to a, to the BPTC that the city was trying, as part of the park renovation, to put in a temporary trail through the parks, which implies a minimum of eight-foot-wide, but preferably 10-foot-wide pathway, as prescribed by the Trails Master Plan, where pedestrians and bicyclists are expected to share a path. I was quite surprised to see a six-foot-wide sidewalk built instead, where there are no obstructions that would prohibit a full-width trail. When I asked staff, I was told there wasn't budget to widen this pathway an additional two feet, and that the trail is supposed to be in the railroad corridor anyway. I believe the six-foot-wide pavement is a danger. Bicyclists, without a safe alternative, will be riding this sidewalk and dodging slower-moving pedestrians, including seniors and children. The sharp curves around the bathroom building are particularly dangerous, as bicyclists will have an obstructed view of those coming from the opposite side of the building. Even someone my size, riding a typical E-bike, would have a combined weight of over 200 pounds. Hitting someone, even at a slow pace, could easily cause serious injury, if the cyclist couldn't see far enough ahead to avoid hitting someone. The BPTC is charged with commenting on pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, but we were not consulted about this path. There was enough extra budget to build a parking lot, so yet again, the convenience of drivers was put ahead of the safety of those who can't drive, can't afford to drive, or just choose not to drive. This city needs to do better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cheyenne, Chey, Chey, Cheyenne Ghosh? Okay, welcome. There's three of you, but I have one speaker card. Are you going to all go together in three minutes? Okay, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Bolch and city councilmembers. My name is Cheyenne Ghosh, and I am a sophomore at Amador Valley High School, and we are Quest Science Center interns, and a part of Quest's Tri-Valley Youth Climate Action Program. Our mission is to deepen understanding and awareness of climate change, foster a united community, and provide meaningful, science-based climate action for a just and resilient future. One of our main projects is about extreme heat events and the formation of urban heat islands. We are here tonight to introduce the City of Pleasanton to our project, and to express our desire to help support the city with the data that we are collecting.
Hi, my name's Aurora, and I'm a senior at Amador. As mentioned, we're identifying urban heat islands, which are areas in cities that get significantly hotter due to asphalt, limited shade, buildings, and more. So, to detect and study them, we worked with national lab scientists and engineers to design and build custom mobile sensors that we mount on top of cars, and as we drive through cities and neighborhoods, the sensors record air temperature data, which then helps us create detailed maps, showing where the hottest areas are, and where cities may need more trees, shade, or cooling strategies. The sensors are handheld, and we've also used them on foot or by bike to map smaller areas, such as parks or school, school campuses. And to make a real impact, we want to work with the City of Pleasanton to identify the areas that are hot, and to make a real impact, we want to work with the City of Pleasanton And to make a real impact, we want to work with the city of Pleasanton to identify areas of concern.
Hello, my name is Sid, and I'm also a rising senior at AVHS. And last Thursday, we ran our heat mapping campaign in Pleasanton. We focused on several key areas, such as downtown, Stoneridge Mall, AVHS, and near Shadow Cliffs, and various community parks. Oh, sorry. No worries. Our data showed noticeable hotspots in downtown Pleasanton, along Hopyard near AVHS, and close to Shadow Cliffs. In the future, we want to plan an even more detailed campaign by covering more parts of the city and gathering more data. We've already made progress in Livermore and Tracy, as we're working closely with their city governments, and we'd love to connect more closely with the Pleasanton city staff as well to enhance what we're doing. And we're hoping to share our results and get suggestions, suggestions on how to enhance, sorry, and how to make this project more useful to the city. For instance, mapping areas that are more likely to be caught in an extreme heat event, or areas the city might want us specifically study. We appreciate your time, and we're excited about the possibility of connecting with the city of Pleasanton to build a more climate-resilient Tri-Valley. Please let us know how we can be of assistance, or who we can reach out to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to pause a minute, because that's pretty impressive. The gentleman in the back is Mr. Matt Gruber. He seems to be the man of the meeting today. So he's our landscape architect. The city of Pleasanton has just recently passed a new tree master plan canopy ordinance. I apologize, I'm butchering it. And I think this is something that we can at least direct initially now and go from there. In addition, we have an Energy and Environment Commission, or committee, commission now, and it might be very astute to speak with them and at public comment for them. So thank you very much for coming down. Appreciate the opportunity to learn more. So Mr. Gruber's in the back, and we can hand you a business card. Okay, thank you. My next speaker is Carrie Olds, followed by Valerie Arkin, followed by Linda Kelly. Welcome again.
Hello, I'm back again. So I'm Carrie, as I told you before. So tonight, I wanted to mention what's going on at Mills on Wills. We are going to, on Thursday, be packing emergency preparedness kits for our clients. So we're partnered with the Rotarian Foundation of Livermore. They gave us a grant that is allowing us to make the thirty kit, or three hundred kits. And then we're partnering with Granite Insurance Professionals. We are going to be hosted at their office, and they're going to be the volunteers packing the kits. They'll be getting a shelf-stable mill kit, gallon of water, flashlights, mask, hand sanitizer, and an emergency blanket, as well as a card that lists the resources that they could use in case of an emergency. We also partner with PG&E for the, the power shut-offs when they have to do that. So they actually partner with us, and then if we have to not serve a mill, or we have a client that's in an affected area, they actually reimburse us to take a mill out to them. So that's something else that we do. Here in the Tri-Valley, we're so fortunate that I have great community support, but I still need volunteers. We, like I said, we brought on thirty new clients, which is really the equivalent to two routes that I'm covering with the volunteers I had. I did get fourteen through the, through the month of June, so not quite one-for-one. So if you're interested in volunteering, we do serve five days a week, which means we're knocking on those doors five days a week, serving the mill and giving the wellness check, and giving interaction to our seniors. If you're available to volunteer or interested in finding out more, you can reach out to me at mo w at spectrumcs.org, and I'd be happy to get you set up and allow you to come out and serve your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your work. Okay, Ms. Valerie Arkin, followed by Linda Kelly. Welcome.
Yes, hi. Good evening, I can say evening this time. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just want to make a brief comment regarding the reduced library hours that were, you know, implemented due to the budget cuts. And on the website, on the city website, the library website, as well as there are some social media posts, it has the new hours being effective August fourth. And I was a little surprised to see that Sunday will be closed. I know that was initially talked about, but there was a lot of community input that really stressed the need for some hours on Sunday and to try to make that work. I also heard council in agreement with that input from the community. So that's why it was even more surprising to me that that's not actually what occurred. There is a note online that says something about eight-hour shifts for, I believe it was operational efficiency or something like that, so that the new hours are all eight-hour shifts. I, you know, I don't know if I understand that completely on why it has to be an eight-hour shift. We don't currently have eight-hour shifts, not even one single day of the week, and I don't know if we ever have. So I don't know if anything can be done at this point, because hours are now posted, and it looks like going forward, but if there is any opportunity to modify that, the message was, I thought, pretty strong for the community for the need for some hours on Sunday. Personally, I think for people who work and can't get there during the week, just having Saturday, and now Saturday hours are limited, is not good. Or kids that are in school and need extra time because they're busy with school and activities during the week, having all the weekend hours are important. So anyhow, maybe there's something that can be looked at again at some point. I think that would be really good and being in line with what the community wanted. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I do know that we hope all of these are temporary while we improve our budget situation, but before you speak, Ms. Kelly, if I can pause you, staff, do you mind responding to how we did come up with that? I know it's an important topic for the community.
Yeah. So essentially, our Director of Library and Recreation, Heidi Murphy, is here, but what I will say is, this was always something that needed to be figured out operationally. We have labor partners, there are existing contracts. We also have a lot of data about who uses the library and when, and so we tried to make the best of our employee, our employee needs, as well as community objectives, and this is where it ended up. So I'm going to, our Library and Recreation Director, Heidi Murphy, is here. If she could add on to that, or modify, that'd be great.
So we did look extensively at hours, and we, we heard the community, we heard council. We looked at all of our usage hours, and the way libraries tend to work is that no matter how many hours you're open on a day, people pack into those hours. So Saturdays had bigger usage than Sundays. We average about 850 people a day on Saturdays versus 675 on Sundays. And so we were looking at, we knew we wanted to keep at least one weekend day open, and then we look at the weekday and the impacts of being open every day of the week. So we have an after-school program that people rely on for our middle school students. We also run recreation services out of the library, and those hours are Monday through Friday, so that was a consideration. We looked at, gosh, we looked at our neighboring libraries, because people tend to use multiple libraries. This is a fun fact, just to know, but California is a universal borrowing state, so anywhere in California that you can live, like I could live in Fresno, and I could get a card in Pleasanton, and vice versa. And so people do use multiple libraries. Dublin is currently closed on Fridays, and so we felt like it was more impactful to people to close on a Friday. And then also looking at our shifts. So our staff work five days in a row, eight-hour shifts. And so to close on a Friday started to give people very weird weekends, Thursdays and Fridays off, which is not ideal for retaining and attracting qualified staff. So we looked at all of those pieces, and we really do think this is our best foot forward to really have equitable library hours for people using the library in different ways. And we hope to give it a try for at least a year and make sure it's running well, that gets us through all of our different seasons, and then if we need to adjust at that point, we can look at that.
Thank you for the additional clarification. I appreciate it. Okay, since I'm still in public comment, I'll finish that out, and then if there's any further questions, okay, thank you very much. So Ms. Linda Kelly, and this is my last speaker card for...
I wanted to comment on that item. You want to wait on that, or?
Do you mind if I finish this, and then we'll, this is my last speaker card. Won't they go from there?
Well, she's gone now, but yeah.
Well, she's only in the next room. I'm sure she can come back. Yes, Ms. Linda Kelly.
I'm Linda Kelly, a board member of the Pleasanton Community of Character Collaborative. I'm here tonight with an invitation for the council, for staff, and indeed for all the residents of our community to join us on Saturday, August the sixteenth, at 5:00 p.m. for one of the hottest ticket items of Pleasanton's summer social scene, our annual summer barbecue fundraiser. The meal includes Fred's famous tri-tip steak, salad, fresh brown butter corn, homemade baked beans, several vegetarian dishes, and a dessert. It's all donated, prepared, and served by our board members. Beer, wine, soft drinks, and water are included. Additionally, entertainment and dancing to the tunes of a local band called Rusty Vinyl will make for an enjoyable evening for the ambiance of the Iker home at 3649 Chelsea Court. In collaboration with liaisons from both the city of Pleasanton and PUSD, our working board awards $1,000 Juanita Hogan scholarships each spring to applicants from Amador, Foothill, and Village High, who these youngsters exemplify the character traits that Mrs. Hogan particularly valued: those of respect, responsibility, honesty, integrity, self-discipline, and compassion. In addition to the scholarship awards, we select an individual or family and an organization to be recognized for contributions to their, the very special character of this particular community. The tickets will be available online. You'll find a link in our website. And in addition to the barbecue itself, we're having an auction, including a golf date and lunch with the mayor at Castlewood, golfing at Ruby Hills, a four-night vacation in a beautiful Airbnb home in Arnold, several wine tastings at local wineries, tickets to the San Francisco Symphony, and a number of beautifully themed baskets. We invite all of you to check in and see about getting tickets, and we'll be loving, most enjoyable to see you there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's anyone else that would like to speak on item that is not on the agenda, please approach the podium at this time. Yes, maybe? No? Okay, we'll close public comment, and I think we had a follow-up question about the library. Yes, please. Councilmember Testa, do you have a follow-up question?
I, the speaker was correct. Council gave direction that we really wanted to keep the library open on the weekend, and I'm just, don't quite understand the justification. We weren't notified and, and...
Yeah, so the, the conversation was very much around, how do we make this work operationally? And there were caveats to the conversation around meeting and conferring with the employee groups that are going to be impacted. You know, we did try to do things like put back some evening hours that the council and the, obviously, a lot of the speakers during the comments had. So we have a couple nights per week where we get to 9:00 p.m. We still have a weekend day, and, and really, that was trying to find that balance. As Director Murphy mentioned, there's just a lot of operational considerations when we're trying to recruit and retain, retain staff largely at this stage, but also make sure that we're meeting the community's expectations around both evening, daytime, and weekend hours. And so it was a needle we did our best to thread, and as Director Murphy mentioned, if it, if it doesn't, if it doesn't work, we want to give it a good amount of runway to get through the seasons and all the different programming, but if it doesn't work, then we'll come back and try again.
And that was not the direction of council, so I'll, we'll just have a follow-up conversation. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. I also wanted to just ask staff, related to the comment related to the bike trail area through downtown, I've heard this actually a few times, we're doing a bike pad master plan right now, right, or it's underway, it's on our...
Correct. There's a, there's an update to an existing plan, and the existing plan shows the transportation corridor having the wider bikeway and the park having pedestrian paths.
Okay. I'll just bring attention that we should probably see if we can incorporate some of these comments into that process, so.
Understood.
All right. That concludes item twenty-two. We're moving to public comment. Public hearings and other matters. Thank you, it's eight o'clock, we're through consent, not normally my normal pace. We're going to proceed to item number twenty-three. Introduction of Proposed MOUs between the Livermore Pleasanton Fire Department and the IAFF Battalion Chief and Firefighters Associations. And it's broken into A and B. I presume that's because you want to motion for each group separately? Okay, so yes, thank you, staff. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Xavier Skoggins, Director of Human Resources and Labor Relations. We are here to introduce the elements of two proposed contracts between the Livermore Pleasanton Fire Department, JPA, and the International Association of Firefighters, Local 1974 Firefighters, Contract and Battalion Chief Contract. We will refer to them in the presentation as IFF, IAFF, and IFFBC for distinction. Our chief negotiator, Tim Davis, with Burke, Williams, and Sorenson, is here to present the background and principal terms of the successor agreements for both bargaining units. Tim?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we're going to go over the background and negotiation timeline, as well as the material terms of both MOUs. So we have three-year MOUs with both the IAFF Battalion Chiefs. Their MOU expired in June of this year. We bargained from April to June. We engaged in five negotiating meetings. We reached a total tentative agreement for a successor MOU, and then on June of twenty-six, the Battalion Chiefs unanimously ratified the total tentative agreement. So the principal terms of this agreement for the Battalion Chiefs are as follows. In terms of salary increases for the first year of the agreement, there was not a salary increase provided. There was one in the second year and in the third year, and that is three percent. Another reform that was done related to this contract was the reduction of administrative leave, and those hours go down to forty hours, beginning in January one of 2026. And then the administrative leave benefit is effectively eliminated in January one of 2027. There was a modest increase to their uniform allowance, going from $1,000 annually to $1,200. There was an increase of a city contribution to the retiree health savings from $75 to $150 per month. Currently, that impacts only one individual, but over time, there will be others who will enjoy that increase. Their shift management pay has a slight increase in the last year of the contract from 7.5% to eight percent. And then finally, their stipend coverage goes up, flat-dollar amount, but it goes up by a percentage of three percent each year. So those are the principal terms for the Battalion Chiefs. In terms of the impact, fiscal impact, over the three-year period, it is $231,000. The cost is, that's the combined cost, but the cost is shared by both Livermore and Pleasanton. So Pleasanton's obligation for the term of the agreement is $115,000 over the three-year Now, in terms of the fire suppression group, a larger group, so the, the dollars and everything that flows is a little bigger, but the timeline was very similar. They had a three-year MOU that expired June 30. We also had five negotiation sessions over approximately a month and a half. June 13, we reached an overall tentative agreement for a successor MOU. That MOU was also ratified by the Fire Association. In terms of the terms of this agreement, unlike the Battalion Chiefs, this is a four-year agreement, as opposed to a three-year agreement. Each year of the contract, first three years is a three percent increase, and then in the last year, it's a 3.75% increase. Another key element of the agreement was an increase with regards to education incentives. That went up 2.5% for all levels in the second year of the contract, and then in the fourth year of the contract, there's a bifurcation where AAs are 2.5% and then 5% for BAs or Masters. The paramedic of rank... The paramedic of rank was a, also another component of the agreement where it essentially goes to four-point-five percent in the last year of the contract. And then finally, with regards to retention, because retention of firefighters reduces vacancies and therefore helps reduce overtime, we have a sort of feathered approach where we begin to build in some retention pay with the first year until finally, in the fourth year, we have two percent for those at eight years or more, and then four percent for those of twelve years of service. So those are the primary components. In terms of the overall impact for this agreement, it is eight-point-six-three million dollars over the four-year term. Again, those dollars are shared by both Livermore and Pleasanton, with Pleasanton's obligation over the four-year period being about four-point-three million. The next steps, after the labor groups ratify the contract, it then goes to the city of Livermore to approve the MOU on July twenty-eighth. And as Pleasanton has a two-step approach, this will be brought back to the city for approval before this council on August nineteen, twenty-twenty-five. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. I'll just mention for my fellow councilmembers and the public, so the two-step process that was outlined is that Pleasanton is now daylighting this and making it available for public comment. So this is an informational item. We are not going to be voting on it tonight, and the vote will come back at the August meeting, as just stated. So with that, we will go through questions and standard process here, but just, there'll be no action taken on these two informational items. So this is twenty-three A and twenty-three B. We'll just take it in one. So same order, different starting position. Councilmember Iker, any questions?
As soon as I can figure out, make this thing work.
And just, just for clarification purposes, can you, can you tell us how many BCS there are as compared to how many firefighters in the association? Just so that way the public understands the discrepancy between a hundred and fifteen thousand and four million.
Absolutely. There are seven represented BCS in, in the bargaining unit versus a hundred and twenty-three in the fire and suppression.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Councilmember Tessa, any questions?
This is probably for our city manager, but whoever. Could you explain the fact that we are a joint fire JPA with Livermore? And how does that influence or impact our ability in negotiations?
It's a partnership. So the city of Livermore and the city of Pleasanton are both co-equable partners in the Livermore Pleasanton Fire Department Joint Powers Authority. And what that essentially means is that, you know, when we're, when we're coming up with terms and negotiating parameters, we are, we are working together to set those, those limits for the negotiation process. And just to be really explicit about where we are financially, we're in a, not as great of a place as Livermore is in. And so there is finding the right balance between the two organizations to be able to come forward together to negotiate with the, with the unions in, in the Fire Department. And it does, it's, it's an added level of complexity, but I think both cities, over time, there have been times when Livermore has been doing less well, and, and there have been times when Pleasanton's been doing less well. And so right now, we're in that position, and we were able to find terms that work for both organizations.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Vice Mayor?
I had a chance to ask my questions during previous closed sessions, so I have no further questions.
Okay. No questions here. Thank you. Okay. And I have no questions either. I have no speaker cards, so I'll open. If anyone would like to speak on items twenty-three A or B, please approach the podium at this time. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council. Again, this is informational items, so we're not taking a motion and vote at this time. So any final comments, knowing that it's going to come back? Councilmember Iker?
No comment.
Councilmember Tessa?
No comment.
Vice Mayor?
None.
And Councilmember Gidos?
None, thank you.
Okay. Well, I will take a moment. Since I've been through a few LPFD fire negotiations at this time, I appreciate the process that they came to the table with, and I appreciate the team, the city team, for doing, obviously, very laborious work to bring this forward to us. I look forward to the next meeting, but definitely just wanted to express my appreciation to our firefighters and their good faith efforts to come to a contract for us. So with that, we are concluding item twenty-three A and B, and we're going to proceed to item number twenty-four at this time. Thank you very much. So item number twenty-four is accept the final water rate study report and authorize the Prop two-eighteen noticing for water and sewer rate changes. I've noticed that there's quite a number of people in the room and quite a few speaker cards up here. So if you'd like to speak on any of the remaining three items, you'll just fill out a blue speaker card and return them to the nice little inbox over at the city clerk's desk, and we'll go from there. So just make sure you get in the queue. And with that, welcome, staff. I think you have a presentation to kick us off.
We do. Thank you, mayor and council. I'm just going to really briefly introduce this. We've been, as you'll see in the presentation, we've been at this for many months, basically doing the staff work, community engagement, and getting direction from council along the way in multiple steps to make sure that the city's infrastructure, and particularly our water, wastewater, recycled water programs, are funded and maintained and meeting community expectations. We are really happy to be here, working with Sanjay Aguar, as well as Nancy Fan from Water Resources Economics. And I'm going to turn the presentation over to them this evening to help us talk through the Prop two-eighteen process that we're, we're about to embark upon.
Thank you, Jerry. Good evening, Honorary Mayor, City Council, staff, and public. It's our pleasure to be here again to talk about this important study, the water rate study. I'll be leading off the presentation this time, and then I'll be turning it over to Nancy. Our agenda, we're going to be covering a lot of different items, because this is sort of a summation of a lot of presentations that we've had with you. So I do appreciate all the input and direction that you have provided us throughout the study. We're going to go over the study process, all the different meetings we've had, talk about some of the challenges that we've been addressing in the study, and the benefits that this provides to the community, three key ones. Then Nancy will lead off and talk about the proposed rates for water, the drought rates, which are one charge if needed, hopefully not needed, but a surcharge, a connection fee, which is for, for growth, one-time fee for growth, and then talk about the importance of the rate study that we've just submitted, the administrative record that clearly shows you the math and logic behind that rate study. Transparency is the key here. Then talk about the Prop two-eighteen notice that we're about to start off in the process, next steps, and schedule. So overview of the study, we've been at this for a while. So I want to commend you on the transparency that you provided to your community. We started this process, or the city, I should say, started this process almost a year ago in August of twenty-twenty-four. We've interacted with PWAG. I also want to appreciate PWAG for their input and comments throughout this study and providing us direction.
The Pleasanton Water Advisory Group, just tuning in.
Thank you very much. And, and my apologies if I start using too many acronyms. Then we've had the, the Water Supply Management Plan that was approved on January twenty-first of twenty-twenty-five. Then we've provided you the financial plan. I'm just going to highlight a couple of these that are in March of twenty-twenty-five. We've talked about the rate structure also in May of six. We've talked about the drought rates and connection fees in June. Again, these are all public meetings that were provided. And then we're here today where we're providing you the report for filing, just to receive, and so make it available to the public. Then the next step, and Nancy will talk a bit more about this, is the Prop two-eighteen public process, where we send out the notice to the property owners, so they have a time to look at, know about this increase, be notified. They also have time to look at the report. And then we have the public hearing scheduled for October seventh, and the rates to be effective on January first. So what are the challenges that we addressed in this study? There's three-fold challenges. The first is a financial challenge associated with funding capital projects. Aging infrastructure is one of the challenges that all agencies throughout California and the United States are facing. And we really went through a thought process about what is that level of service? What's the right amount of funding that we should do that makes sense so that we are ahead of this curve? And also asking ourselves, what, how much debt should we do? How much cash? Pros and cons? We've had that discussion with you, and I appreciate, again, your input. We also talked about the challenges with rate structure design, and how do we make sure we have a rate structure that's equitable, that's defensible? We've come up with a strategy associated with that, that Nancy will be talking about. I'll be also elaborating a little bit more, which is a uniform rate structure, very simple, easy to explain. And then we also talked about some of the financial challenges that we faced with Zone Seven with their fixed charge, and how do we deal with that? And we came up with a strategy associated with that. So the benefits, the next slide, is that we're based, we're having safe, sustainable water supply for our community. We're investing in the community and making sure that local supply comes back online. That's an important aspect for sustainability. We're also developing a rate structure that's equitable and defensible, that all customers are treated equally. And then we're also helping with infrastructure reliability, enhancing those critical infrastructures, and reducing risk of future levels of service. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Nancy.
Great. Thank you, Sanjay, and good evening, mayor and council members. It's good to see everyone again. So the next couple of slides that I'm going to be going through will be a review. None of these numbers are going to be new. We have reviewed all of these in prior city council meetings. So that, there's three slides here for proposed water rates for the next four years, first being effective January first of next year, as Sanjay mentioned. And we have a bimonthly fixed charge and a variable charge. So the current rates, if you can see there, there's a range for the current rates for the variable charge. As Sanjay mentioned, we are moving to a uniform rate, so rate structure becomes a little bit more streamlined on both the city and the Zone Seven side. Okay? For the Zone Seven pass-through, we are assuming a hundred percent pass-through. So for the Zone Seven fixed costs, those will be passed through in the Zone Seven bimonthly fixed charge, and then all Zone Seven variable costs will be in the Zone Seven variable charge, which is a uniform rate as well. And because this is a pass-through of Zone Seven costs, you know, we've made some assumptions of what those increases are going to be for Zone Seven costs, but if those change based on what Zone Seven decides, then the Zone Seven pass-through may have some changes. Okay? And then this is your combined rate with both the city charge and the Zone Seven pass-through for both the bimonthly fixed charges and variable charges. Okay? And going into the customer impacts for the changes to the water rates, these are the impacts that we're just going to see in that first year. So, you know, as we've gone through this process, we talked about, a lot about cost of service. So that's really going to be that first year of impacts that we see on this slide, and then every year thereafter, all impacts to all customers are going to be across the board. So for an average user using twenty-four CCF per bimonthly billing period, a single-family customer with a five-eighths-inch meter, which is the most common type of customer in your service area, they will see a nineteen-dollar-and-eight-cent increase to their bill, bimonthly bill, so about ten dollars a month. Okay? And that's for the first year. And they will see an increase of approximately fifteen-eight-eight percent in years two, three, and four. Okay? And water bill comparison, I know there's kind of a lot going on, on this chart here, but we have a comparison of bimonthly water bills for low usage, which is ten CCF, average usage, which is twenty-four CCF, and very high usage, which is seventy CCF per bimonthly bill. And these are single-family customers with a five-eighths-inch meter. So we have in that first stacked column, that's your current rate structure. The second one is the proposed rate structure. The third is comparison to Livermore, and the fourth is comparison to DSRSD. So these are the agencies that are in the Tri-Valley area that have the same source of supplies, so they're the most comparable to the level of service as well as the type of water supply that they're serving to their customers. And so for low usage, the top-left graph, we can see that Pleasanton proposed is still the lowest of the three. Same thing for average usage, we kind of level out a little bit more. And then for very high usage, the Pleasanton proposed is kind of in that middle range. So not the lowest, but not the highest. Next, our recycled water rates. These are just going to be the city rates because recycled water customers don't receive Zone Seven water supply. So these are just the costs that the city incurs to serve recycled water customers. And we're keeping the rate structure the same. It's a bimonthly fixed charge by meter size and a uniform variable charge. Okay? And then for customer impacts for recycled water, the most common meter size is a one-and-a-half-inch meter, and average usage is five-hundred-and-sixty CCF. I will say that average for recycled water, that kind of, you know, there's not a super-consistent level of use. Each customer kind of depends on what the purpose is of their recycled water usage is, and how much they use per month. But an average usage for all your customers is about five-hundred-and-sixty CCF per bill, and that correlates to an increase of a hundred-and-seventy-three dollars and eighteen cents per bill for that first year. Next is going to be your proposed drought rates. These are rates that are only in effect if the city, if there is a drought situation, drought emergency, and the city council decides to implement them. These are really just kind of a tool for your back pocket to respond to drought. It's to keep the city in its current financial position, even when there are reduced consumption during each stage of drought. So this is based on the city's water shortage contingency plan. There are six stages of drought that are outlined in that plan, stages one through six, and each correlate with a percentage of total usage reduction in your community. So stage one, ten percent, up to ten percent; stage two, up to twenty percent, and so on and so forth. And stage six is over fifty percent, but typically we use sixty percent. So your current drought rates are based on the existing rate structure, so that's why we see, you know, tier one through four for single-family, and different rates for multifamily, commercial, industrial, and irrigation. Currently, those drought rates have a ten CCF allotment, but because of changing usage characteristics in your community, as well as some additional conservation, the proposed drought rates that we are showing here have an eight CCF allotment. So that just takes into consideration that customers that are using, you know, low amounts of water each bimonthly bill, they're not able to conserve quite as much as customers who are irrigating their lots quite often. But all customers are benefiting from this eight CCF allotment. And we have the drought rates here for each stage one through six for years one through three. And these are incremental charges that are charged on top of the existing rates during each stage of drought. So for customer impacts, we're showing just drought rates, stages two and three. These are typically the most common drought stages that are implemented. The, all the customer impacts for one through six are included in the rate study report. But for this presentation, we just have two to three. It's for a single-family with a five-eighths-inch meter and using twenty-four CCF per bimonthly bill, which is the average. So in that left graph there, it shows stage two. So with, without a drought, that's that first column. They are paying a hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and thirteen cents. And then if they don't reduce their usage, but it's a stage-two drought, they're expected to reduce twenty percent, but they maintain the same level of usage, they will see their bill increase to two-hundred-and-eleven dollars. But if they reduce their usage in accordance with a twenty percent reduction as required in stage two, then their bill will actually decrease to a hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars. Same thing with stage three, where the no-drought scenario is a hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. If we, if they don't reduce their usage in stage three, that middle column goes up even higher to two-hundred-and-twenty-four. And then if they reduce thirty percent for stage three, then their bill will reduce to a hundred-and-seventy-one dollars. And this is the proposed water connection fees. Just as a reminder, this is not included on the slide, but we did look... Just as a reminder, this is not included on the slide, but we did look into the connection fee methodology. So just as a reminder, we're doing a hybrid methodology, which includes a buy-in component. So that represents, you know, the, a payback to your existing customers for building out the infrastructure that new customers are using. So that is the column that says buy-in fee. And then we have an incremental component as well, which is paying for future expansion-related CIP, to grow your system in order to serve new customers. And so the purpose of water connection fees, these are one-time charges, charged to new customers only, new development only, that, you know, it follows the principle of growth pays for growth. So if they're new customers to the city, they should be on similar financial footing as customers, existing customers in the city that have paid into your water system. Okay? And so for the 5/8 inch meter, which is a typical equivalent dwelling unit, it will be $5,269 per 5/8 inch. Okay? And for the comparison between water connection fees in the region for an equivalent meter unit, the current Pleasanton connection fee is $2,177. That is just that incremental component. When we add in the buy-in component and rework the numbers during this process, the proposed connection fee is $5,269 per equivalent meter unit. Livermore is $5,462, so kind of right on par with Livermore. And Dublin is a lot higher at $15,670. For the rate study report, so that should be in the council packet as well as be posted online. This is a really, really lengthy document. It's good nighttime reading if you want to fall asleep. But, you know, we don't, we don't write it because it's riveting to read, but it's more so to detail everything that we've done thus far in this process. As Sanjay mentioned, you know, we've been at this for almost a year now. So this includes an executive summary, so it summarizes everything, the results, processes, recommendations at kind of a more high level. Then each of the sections from financial plan, cost of service analysis, proposed rates, connection fees, that goes into the detailed methodology of how we came to these water rates, water connection fees, and drought rates. So basically, what we do is we do math in written form. So you should be able to follow all of the calculations in the report to figure out why we did what we did, why were certain assumptions made, why were certain calculations done the way that they were. And then we also have an appendix to add any additional information. So it's a very comprehensive report. And this rate study report is also known as an administrative record, and it has been reviewed by staff and legal counsel prior to providing it in the council packet. So why, you know, why do we go through all of this trouble to write such a lengthy report with so much detail? You know, the main reason is because Prop 218 requires that we show our work. You know, we have to prove that there's a nexus between what we charge customers in the final rates and what it costs to serve those customers. And the rate study report is our proof of that. So we show in detail all of our methodology, all of our assumptions to, to be able to prove this nexus. And the reason that it has so much detail is because this is the city's defense in case of any legal challenges. So if there are legal challenges, this report is what comes up in, in, in front of judges. They have to read it. So it has to be readily understandable to maybe people who aren't rate study consultants. So that's why we put so much effort and detail into the rate study report. Okay? And then to round this all out, the city team has been really hard at work creating the Prop 218 notice, which has, we have some screenshots here, but it should be included up there as well. This gives a high level to the methodology, kind of what's changing, why, why we had the rate study in the first place, and all of the results, proposed rates, as well as impacts that are a result of the rate study. Okay? And then for next steps in schedule, today is the city council meeting where the council receives a report and approves the Prop 218 notice. The last day to mail out notices is towards the end of this month. And we have a public review period where they can review the Prop 218 notice and the report, August and September. The next city council meeting will be our public hearing to adopt water rates, which is October 7th. And hopefully, new rates will be effective January 1st of next year. Okay? And that is our presentation. I'm happy to turn back to any slides if we have any more questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So we are, truly appreciate all the work to get to this point. So we're going with questions, same order, different starting position. Councilmember Tessa, do you have questions for the water rate 218 notice report? Item 24.
I really only have one. And this is very thorough and, and good report. Thank you. You know, I don't like the outcome of rate increases, but it's really appreciated that we are able to show the community and justify what we have to do. I don't see anything about the senior and low-income discount rates. Is this in any way factored, or what did we do with that?
It'll come back. It'll, it'll come back before the new rates take effect. And we'll want to make sure that we have a conversation about the, the policy questions and the budget associated with it. We did leave money in the budget, you might recall, for an offset or subsidy for, for, for this program intention.
For both, the low-income and the senior program?
We, we left a, a single bucket of money that can be used for those kinds of programs. And we'll bring back the program ideas and make sure it's endorsed by council.
Okay. Because I did get people sending me emails, and I didn't see mention in here, so, good. Okay. All right. Thank you. That's it.
Okay. Vice Mayor, questions?
Thank you. Just a general question about the Prop 218 notice. Did the PWAG, the Water Advisory Group, have a chance to review this, not for comments?
We did not, no. This is, these are a lot of technical requirements, and so we did rely on our, on our consultants for this work exclusively.
Okay. As I recall from the last time that we went through a Prop 218 process for water rates, there were members of the public that pointed out shortcomings that they thought were, that the notice was inadequate. Have we applied any of those learnings here?
Yeah, 100%. The reason that this process has looked the way that it has looked is a lot because of the takeaways from that, that last time around with water rates.
Okay. And then with regard to the Prop 218 process, if there are residents who want to object to the, to the plan, they can submit objections in a predetermined way. And what's the number of objections required to affect any disapproval or overturning?
So it's 51% plus one.
11,000.
51%.
Half of our, yes. House residential customers approximately.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Gatos?
Thank you. During the prior, wait, during the prior meetings, we, we went over this a few times. And one thing that wasn't sort of jumping out from the staff report is that, you know, there were some changes in the law that affected how we were forced to sort of do our water rate study, to change these rates. And it, you know, from a, from an objective person's point of view, the, the changes out of the outcome can sort of border on the absurd. You've got your low-water rate folks who use the least amount of water now are going to have their bills increased essentially by the biggest percentage. And the biggest users are going to actually have their water, you know, bills lowered. Can you just, I want anyone who's paying attention to what we're doing to understand the legal constraints that we're under about how our water rate study has to correspond to the changes in the law to be justifiable if we're able, you know, taken to task in court. Because we spent a lot of time talking about it, and I just think it bears repeating about how that's correlated. So we have a, a record of that.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. So one of the challenges, so water rates are governed by Prop 218. And the interpretation of Prop 218 changes over time based on different court rulings. And those are citable court rulings. And there has been some recent ones that are citable. That question, it, you can still have tiers, but we have to have a couple of components. One of them is different sources of supply. So if we have different sources of supply, then we can have tiers. Currently, we're 100% dependent on Zone Seven. Now, the plan is to have groundwater available. So when that groundwater is available again, and that's what this plan is, it's a capital improvement to bring back groundwater, then we can revisit having tiers in our community. So that's the game plan that we're doing. So we want to go back, I mean, and, and tiers isn't really, it's up to you, right? It's not up, so city council can reconsider that at that time and decide whether to go back to tiers or not.
Sure. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we, we tied that, just circle that back to where we are. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Iker?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to articulate that I do appreciate the amount of effort that went into this. I think this plan is, was well-laid out. And the fact that you're demonstrating what, what the need is, and why the rates are going to be what they are, I think that's huge. And that's the transparency our community needs, so they can better understand what we're doing. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have a quick question, which is to Vice Mayor's point about the learnings. I see in the 218 notice that it has a QR code that says, "Go to our website so that you can figure out what your rate is." And I remember the public comment, I actually remembered the gentleman's name about, "We need that information," so they have a more informed. So we will have a website that a resident or consumer can go in, plug in their units, and then see their new proposed rates, correct? Correct. It's ready to go now. And when this mails, that QR code will take you to that site with a lot of information about what we're doing, why, as well as a rate calculator for your personal use. Okay. And to that point, I will just ask staff to check the QR code once the website goes live before you go to print, right? Because that, you can't change, and websites change so quickly. So that is a essential part for us.
Okay, I do have a speaker card on this topic. So with that, with no further questions, we'll go to public comment. Ms. Linda Kelly, if you would like to speak on item 24, please go ahead and submit a blue speaker card and turn them into the city clerk. This is my only speaker card. Three minutes on the clock. Welcome.
I thank you for a very thorough report. Easy to understand. I have one minor problem with it. I had my own water meter fail, and it was changed last week. When it was changed, the question came up, is this a 5/8 meter, or is it a 3/4 meter? The answer was, it's a 3/4, because you had a 3/4 in the first place. I've lived in the same house for 50-some-odd years, and have always been billed at the 5/8 rate. Never anything any different. Why now am I told it's 3/4, and you're telling me it's 5/8? And what is that going to do to all of the rest of my neighbors in the rates as we move forward? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Maybe we do have a little bit of additional staff feedback on that?
Yeah, so I, I was remiss earlier. So Director of Public Works, Soo Chin Young, is here. And I also want to acknowledge Todd Yamello's work on this project. It's been, he's our plant, our utility planning manager. But Soo Chin will be able to talk about the meters, the meter replacement program that we're embarking upon, and put some context around the question.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Ball to end council member. To answer the question, the base unit of the water meter should be 5/8 inch. And because of the manufacturer that we are using right now, they are no longer manufacturing 5/8 inch, a meter that labeled 5/8 inch. They labeled it 3/4 inch, but rated with a capacity for 5/8 inch. So for all resident right now, they are charged with 5/8 inch water rate. They are not charged with 3/4 inch water rate. It will stay consistent like that. With the new project that we are doing right now with the water meter, we are seeking for 5/8 inch water meter as a base water meter. And at the point, then, after we select the meter, when we are doing the replacement, it will be going back to the 5/8 inch water meter.
So 5/8 is our standard?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions while she's here? Yeah, Vice Mayor.
How many residents will get water meters replaced?
We, total, total account we have is 22,000. If I remember the number right, 5/8 inch water meter is roughly about 17,000 customer.
Okay. So a large percentage?
Yes.
Almost all?
Yes.
Okay. Any additional questions of staff while they're here? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, I have no further speakers on item 24. If you'd like to speak on item 24, please approach the podium. Seeing none, we'll close out the public comment on item 24 and bring you back to the council. This is an action item. The recommendation is to accept the 25 water rate study report and authorize the Prop 218 notice for water and sewer rate charges. Check in the QR code before we mail. What would we like to do?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the water rate study report and authorize the Proposition 218 noticing for water and sewer rate changes.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. I went a little quick there, so we'll go around for comments. So Councilmember Tessa, any comments?
Nope, no comments.
Okay. Vice Mayor, any comments?
No.
Councilmember Gatos?
No.
Councilmember Iker?
No.
Okay, well, I seem to be the verbose one today. So I'll just do a few things. First of all, thank you WRE for your work. This process for our water rate study, along with the Water Advisory Group that we put together and staff, and I, I do want to say it, we are doing a data-driven approach that I think should build trust. And we've taught, you talked about it, our community can watch this. But we've taken a granular approach to figure out the age of pumps and everything we need. As Councilmember Gato said, collapsing the tiers, as well as dealing with the Zone Seven fixed charge, is two monumental shifts that we had to address. And, you know, we've gone with that. And I definitely understand that the proposed rate increases are not likely what our community wanted to see in light of the fiscal headwinds that every household is facing. But we have to make sure that we're investing in a reliable, sustainable water system. And this is a data-driven approach to achieve that. So just, I really want to thank everyone that kind of came up with that. And as I said before, I want to emphasize, we have a lot of information going on the webpage related to the water rates. The Prop 218 notice, I thought was pretty well-written to read and communicate the issues at hand. And the timeline, the timeline of what your council went through is listed on the 218 notice, so that people can look at those meetings and watch them if they're so inclined. Okay? So with that, we have a motion made and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers Iker?
Aye.
Nybert?
Aye.
Gatos?
Aye.
Tessa?
Aye.
Mayor Ball?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right. That concludes item number 24. I apologize, I know you all have been waiting for something else because we're still here in the room. But we're going to take a 10-minute recess or break, and then we will reconvene at 8:52, please. Thank you. Thank you.
And the Housing Accountability Act now applied to charter cities. The bottom line is that the state housing mandates largely override local control even for charter cities. On the financial side, however, charter cities maintain significant advantages. Most notably, charter cities can implement real property transfer taxes that exceed state limits. And this is really the primary fiscal opportunity we're exploring today. Charter cities also have more flexibility with public contracting rules, prevailing wage requirements, and budget management. The key takeaway here is that while charter status can provide flexibility, we need to be realistic. The state has increasingly asserted control over traditional municipal affairs, particularly So why are we considering this now? As a general law city, Pleasanton is subject to state law in all matters. Our current transfer tax total is $1.10 per $1,000. The city receives 55 cents of that, which is split with the county. We simply cannot increase this without charter status. Becoming a charter city would give us enhanced local control over municipal revenues, specifically the ability to implement a voter-approved real property transfer tax. This represents an opportunity for an increased fiscal sustainability for our community. Let's talk numbers. Currently, we're generating modest revenue from transfer taxes. $651,000 in fiscal year 2223 and $853,000 in fiscal year 2324. And look at what our neighboring charter cities are collecting. Alameda charges $12 per thousand. Berkeley ranges from $15 to $25 depending on property value. Hayward is at $8.50. Oakland ranges from $10 to $25, and San Leandro is at $11. Our consultant, HDL Corwin &amp; Co., has projected that if Pleasanton implemented a $6 per thousand rate, we would generate between $7 million and $9.8 million annually. At $12 per thousand, that jumps to between $14 million and $19.6 million. This would be a significant new revenue source for essential city services, infrastructure, and community priorities. Let me walk you through the process. There are specific legal requirements we must meet. We need two public hearings at least 30 days apart, with one held outside normal business hours to maximize public participation. After the second hearing, we must wait at least 21 days before council can vote. If council decides to move forward, here's a potential timeline for the November 26 ballot. In January 26, begin drafting charter. February through April, continue drafting while conducting community engagement. In May, have our first public hearing. In June, our second public hearing. In July, a council vote to place on the ballot. In November 26, the voters will decide. The cost to place this on the ballot would be between $194,000 and $291,000. As I'll discuss in the end, if voters approve a transfer tax, these one-time costs could be recovered within just a few months. Let me summarize the key considerations. Benefits: This would provide fiscal flexibility for essential services and enhance local control over municipal affairs. Importantly, it would diversify our revenue beyond sales tax. Our approach: We recommend keeping the charter simple and focused. If the council chooses to proceed with the transfer tax, the primary purpose would be to enable that while preserving our existing city structure. Other considerations: We need to be clear-eyed that housing laws will still largely apply to charter cities. This process will require extensive public engagement. And while there are one-time costs, they will be recoverable within months if a tax is approved by voters. Which brings us to today's key question. Does the council support moving forward with exploring charter status for potential future ballot measure? This is an informational report, and we're seeking your direction on whether to begin the process that could ultimately lead to placing this question before Pleasanton voters in November 26. I'm here with the city attorney, city manager, and finance director. Together, we can address any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. I have a clarifying question that might be relevant for our conversation, which is, it appeared in the staff report that I read that there would be a two-step process, one for the charter, one for a potential transfer tax. But in the presentation presented, it maybe was a bit unclear to me. Could you clarify that before we get into council questions?
You could have both on the same election, but I'm sorry.
No, it's a hot mic.
But if you did choose to have both a charter measure and a transfer tax measure, the transfer tax measure would be contingent on the charter city matter being adopted.
Passed.
Passed.
Yeah, so would you have, I mean, I remember when we had PP and QQ, so would you have theoretically both on the ballot, and one would be contingent on the first one?
You could do it that way, or you could just go with the charter.
And then you'd have to do a second election for...
Right. But you could have both on the same, one being contingent on the passage of the charter provision.
So, may I clarify that?
You're not an attorney, so you...
What was said?
Sure.
So, becoming a charter city doesn't automatically mean that there's a transfer tax?
No, the transfer tax would be an...
Separate vote if and when we decide.
Separate vote. It would be an ordinance, and the tax would actually be in the municipal code, not the charter.
Right.
And it would be a different provision.
All right, thank you.
Okay. So we're same order, different starting position. Vice Mayor, clarifying questions to staff.
Oftentimes, whenever people think of a charter for a charter city, you know, think of a legal document, of course, it is a legal document, but also that legalese requires documents to be long, 10, 50, 100 pages long. We have an example in our packet here. San Ramon's city charter.
Is this a clarifying question?
Yeah, it's one and a half pages. So if we went forward, could ours be as simple as this, considering that we want to enact a transfer tax and have that be the main objective?
The simple answer is yes. What is it, like the staff report points out, a charter is a limitation on power. So to maintain the most flexibility, the simplest charters are the best. When you start getting into other limitations on forms of government and those types, in elections, in public contracting specifics, that's when charters become longer and longer and longer. But you can have a simple one-page charter as San Ramon does.
Okay, thank you. It was mentioned that being a charter city, cities can adopt laws on municipal affairs. Don't we already adopt laws or ordinances on municipal affairs?
Actually, we do, but as used in this context, it's a term of art, meaning power. It confers a power upon that a charter city has to oversee its municipal affairs. But in the other contexts, what we do, of course, we regulate municipal affairs, but it's not a term of art, as in this case.
I see. Okay. Those are all the questions I have for now.
Okay. Councilmember Gato?
Sure. Just to clarify, because I think it might have been confusing, so let's say hypothetically, we copied San Ramon's charter, put it on a ballot, and it passed in 2026. It would be at that point that the council would change the municipal code of the city of Pleasanton to enact a transfer tax, correct?
Again, a transfer tax would have to go to the voters. So it could be at the same election or at a subsequent election.
Can you, in, I know I asked this earlier today, and you may not have an answer, but can you restrict the terms of what the transfer tax applies to? Such as if there was a council that didn't want to, you know, punish folks with a transfer tax essentially that had owned their houses for a certain amount of time, but people who were buying and selling houses often would be subject to it? Can you sort of amend your charter to amend the transfer tax to apply in some situations and not others?
I know some charters have different taxes for different valuation levels, like Oakland and Berkeley. Whether or not you could go beyond that and come up with other categories, we would have to look into that.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Okay. Councilmember Gato?
So, in regards to municipal affairs, it includes public contracting and prevailing wage. What aspect in regards to that, what's the benefit for the city in regards to those practices?
Well, post 2013, this was a hot topic because a number of cities became charter cities to avoid prevailing wage requirements for their major construction projects. In 2013, the legislature adopted SB 7, which basically said that for all state-funded public works projects, if you receive state funding, prevailing wage is a requirement. So it became that, it became a little less attractive for charter cities to try to become a charter city just to avoid prevailing wage. I've seen some charters that have different requirements for SB 7 projects and other projects, but that's the main goal. And then, as far as, you can vary from state public contracting law. It's not that common, because we kind of fall under an alternate approach anyway under the public contract code, but you could if you wanted.
Okay. That sounds like a lot of cities have gone to, those that have gone to, charter cities have done so to circumvent laws that regulate general law cities. So they're doing it to get around the rules, yet over time, the legislature has been plugging those holes. Is that correct? Or would that be a good assumption?
I think it's some of that, but there are other instances that charter city, for, you know, you could become a charter city not necessarily to circumvent state law, but to come up with different requirements. For example, for different election requirements, those types of requirements, sometimes those are important to various communities. So I think it varies in the motivation amongst cities on why they go the charter city route.
Okay. So, based upon your presentation and the staff report, there's really two issues that you discuss in there. Are there any other benefits other than increasing the transfer tax to our community to become a charter city? What are the true benefits other than we can tax our residents more?
So, the, I mean, I'll defer to Councilmember Testa, who was the one who initiated the charter city discussion, because I think that's a sort of a fair point in history. But I'll tell you, from my seat today, the value of a really simple, single-page charter that unlocks the potential for real property transfer tax is probably the most appealing reason for the city to be looking at it right now, based on our overall financial conditions. We are at the point where we are, as you saw in the prioritization process, starting to think about what we might want to do for the November 2026 ballot. And if this is something that, even if you don't know tonight, you're saying, we should probably just leave this in the list to do some polling in our community to see what may or may not be supported, that might be as far as we get tonight, or it might be a, we're not interested and we'll move on. But that, for me, is, I think from a staff perspective, from a city perspective, how, you've asked us to consider new and different ways to bring revenue into the organization, and this is a really interesting tool that cities around us have used. I'll cite the city of El Cerrito, which was a little bit worse off in terms of their finances and sort of turned themselves around using this and some other tools. And so it's out there, it's become more popular in the East Bay, and it, based on our overall financial situation, it's, the timing of it right now is because of that.
Okay. Are there any downsides? Because I didn't really see anything that was listed in the staff report for cities who've become charter cities.
Yeah, I mean, there are cities that have gone into a great deal of detail about different functions and different ways to operate their cities in their charter. And I think that there's always a concern that it's going to be seen as a power grab or that it's going to be seen as a way to, you know, shift priorities and shift operational characteristics of the city. Again, you know, it's ultimately up to the city council that is putting something forward for the voters to decide to structure it the way that they want to, but the, as we mentioned tonight in a really high level, and the reason we attached a really simple charter is because the purpose, you know, the primary purpose at this time would be to address our financial situation in a meaningful way.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Councilmember Testa?
Okay, yes. I started this conversation quite a long time ago. I've had, gone to, CalCities in 2018 did a big push saying that all cities should become charter cities, because it does give better authority...
We're in clarifying questions, because I have speaker cards, so is that in a question? Technical or clarifying questions? I'm just following the manual.
As the city manager mentioned, I brought this forward, so I'd like an opportunity to put it in context.
You can do it during the, yes, but this is technical or clarifying questions as per the council handbook, and we have public speakers, so we have to give the process. So I'm just trying to...
This is not a semi-judicial, there is not an applicant that is, it is a totally different discussion. Mayor, fine, well, let's have a conversation off camera. So, my question is the relationship with land use and zoning, because that's where a big piece of this discussion has gone for the last decade, because the state has been usurping the local authorities. So could you explain why the charter city is different from what we are currently as a general law?
Yes, so there are statutory exemptions in the government code for charter cities for planning and zoning-related matters. And generally, the courts uphold those. I cited, you cited a case dealing with the uniformity requirement of state zoning law, and the court said charter cities don't have to follow that. But over time, as far as housing-related matters, the legislature and the courts over the time have largely eroded that, those exemptions. But there's been a number of court cases and a number of pieces of legislation that has basically said that housing is a matter of statewide concern and that general law cities have to follow state law when it comes to housing matters. And I've, we've tried to outline those, put those in context on how those, since that time, 2018, all the way, you know, down to the present, over the last, say, five years, it's been one after another court case or legislative mandate.
And yet, there was a breath of fresh air about SB 9. Would you explain that?
Yes, so there was a case, Ciudad Radondo Beach versus Bonta, that regarded SB 9. And they, the trial court found that the legislature didn't really mic their eight findings, because the legislature was relying on the fact that the legislation was needed to promote low-income housing. And the court said, no, it's really needed to promote all housing. And so, so the court dismissed it on that basis. There's been an appeal filed. And then since that time, the legislature tried to fix that problem by adopting SB 50, which made new findings, that basically requirements of SB 9 are related to housing inadequacies in general.
They put in an affordability clause, which was the fix, but it didn't change the fact that...
Right.
There was a, so, there is still, there is still value. I've been to many workshops that have said there's no downside to a charter city. I will put it in context. I did not bring this discussion forward in context of a transfer tax. I, that, that is, yes, part of an option, but it is not the foundation of becoming a charter city. So my other question would be on the, while the transfer tax is not the, my intention of bringing this forward, I applaud our staff looking for solutions for our current financial situation. So could you help, either you or city manager, on the transfer tax? The concern with residents is they have a lot of equity in their home and that they'll lose some of their equity toward a transfer tax. How does a transfer tax and capital gains interact?
I'll very briefly respond, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull up the exact text, because I don't want to get into a situation where we inadvertently become tax consultants.
But this is so relevant, so thank you.
Yeah, so, let me just find it here. Okay, so, property tax transfer, property transfer taxes are not tax deductible, but if you pay transfer tax as the seller, the taxes are considered selling expenses. And if you pay transfer tax as the buyer, you can include the taxes in the cost basis of the property. So transfer taxes may in fact reduce the capital gains tax liability when your property is sold. And then the caveat is, a tax advisor should be consulted to ensure compliance with federal and state regulations.
Okay. So the seller can reduce the amount of, amount subject to capital gains by showing the transfer tax as an expense?
Yeah, the taxes can be considered a selling expense.
Okay. So, again, the transfer tax was not the motivation for me bringing this forward. I think that the charter city has a lot of value to a city and no downside. But even with entertaining the discussion of a transfer tax, I think it's really important that everybody understand that it can be, it can offset the capital gains as an expense. So that's all I have on questions.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so I have a few questions, if I may as well. So let me ask you this, right? Simple charter is what is an option available for us? How does that get processed and drafted? And I know the staff report kind of outlined it, but how would that go to the voters?
So, so there's three ways a charter can be drafted. The city council itself could draft the charter. The city council could appoint an advisory charter committee. Or the last, the city council could vote to elect a 15-member charter committee, who would then draft the charter to present to the council. But that would be a 15-member elected committee. I think for cities our size, usually, the most popular way is for the city council to present the charter itself or to have an advisory committee.
Okay. So my next question is, to put it on the ballot, to ask, let's say, step one, charter conversion, how many votes of the council does it take to do that?
Three.
Only a simple majority? Okay, to ask for the tax on the ballot, how many council members does it take to ask for that?
I believe it's still three to place on the ballot.
Okay. And what if the, you know, I'll go with the presumption that the tax is the impetus or the driver. What if the tax doesn't pass, but the charter does?
Then you have a charter city with no additional transfer tax.
And $300,000 less than your bank account, right? Because that's the cost to go forward.
The answer is yes, but it depends what else we do on that ballot. So there could be other, other things that we would consider.
Okay. Can you amend a charter once it's adopted?
Once it's adopted, the charter can only be amended by the voters.
Of the people, yeah.
So any amendment would have to be brought back to be voted upon.
Okay. And then, I talked to a few cities, and one of the concerns was the state is starting to make, I'll call it the law of unintended consequences. They're trying, they're starting to make grant funding, access to capital, a bit more dependent upon general law versus charter cities. Is that true, or is that just hearsay and fear-mongering?
I don't know if it's true, but, you know, like I gave the example, it's an old example, but SB 7 where, for prevailing wages, that now all state grant-funded projects have to follow prevailing wages. So I imagine for some funding, funding sources from the state, that they would, they would want whatever city to follow their own requirements, regardless of whether they're a charter city, so.
Okay. And then lastly, you wrote in the staff report, but I'll just mention it and ask for clarification, right? The process would be public hearings, potential SEQA review, conversations with bargaining groups, and then the voter ballot measure, correct? Amongst other steps to see if this was...
Yeah, there's also a public outreach component. So I think we laid out a schedule from January through essentially July of 2026, where we would be, we would be following the steps to have a charter in front of the council for a vote to place it on the ballot.
And just to clarify, if it's a simple charter, some of these steps may not be necessary. For example, if it didn't include any land use limitations, it's doubtful SEQA, it would be exempt from SEQA. Same thing if it didn't include any reorganization of city personnel or city departments, it's doubtful that we would need to go to the bargaining group. So it could just be as simple as public outreach.
Okay. Okay. Are there any additional questions by any of my fellow council members before I open it up to public comment at this time? Councilmember Testa?
Nope.
Okay. So we'll go to public comment. I have several speaker cards. If you'd like to speak on item 25, please turn in a speaker card, blue card, and send it to the city clerk. Our first speaker will be Todd Nelson, followed by William Dorich, followed by Mike Francisco. And three minutes, please. Everyone assume position.
It's good to see you again. It's been a while. I'll be much briefer than I intended, because the explanation was really helpful, if not still confusing. But the thing that I most objected to was that this seemed like a large distraction when there are real problems that the city needs to solve, and so I want you to stay focused on the immediate problems. I understand the benefit of this, but nonetheless, I would rather you work on something more concrete and local. Thank you.
Thank you very much. William Dorich, followed by Mike Francisco.
Do I get another 2 minutes and 52 seconds?
You do not get accumulate, followed by Mr. David Stark's third in the queue there. Welcome.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm here to speak in opposition as the city of Pleasanton becoming a charter city in order to adopt a real estate transfer tax. I'm William Dorilock, a business owner in Pleasanton and managing broker, CEO of Cook Holdings, DBA Realty One Group today. My headquarters office is in Pleasanton on Spring Street. Regarding my real estate experience, I've been licensed since 1977 and as a broker since 2003. I was past president of Bay East Association in 2017. The Bay East headquarters is also, as you know, located in Pleasanton. My relationship and participation in Pleasanton is on several levels. I'm a graduate of Leadership Pleasanton in 2012, and I served two terms on the Economic Vitality Committee with the city of Pleasanton, having been termed out about two years ago. As a city, we attract and engage with the business community, especially life sciences and the technology sectors, encouraging those companies to hire local and have those hires the opportunity to live where they work. There are also long-term residents that, due to the appreciation of housing, have high capital gains to consider. Saddling them with a steep potential real estate transfer tax bill may actually have a chilling effect on their real estate transaction. And a home that doesn't sell won't generate any transfer tax revenue. The solution is not more taxes that create a barrier to homeownership and slow the real estate market, but rather looking carefully at how the city does business, attracting and supporting businesses that generate sales tax revenue, and more housing across the spectrum of housing alternatives. Being welcoming, not more onerous for both businesses and residents, is the way forward. By adopting a posture of more long-term solution, not short-term fixes, Pleasanton will retain the spirit and quality of life those that have come here to enjoy it. Make that division, make that the vision and the solution, not increasing the cost of entry that more and more cannot manage. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
You certainly could. How are you, Ms. Testa?
How are you, Ms. Tessa?
I'm very well, thanks. So were you aware that you could offset your, um, a transfer tax expense with your, against your capital gains?
Well, I'm not a licensed CPA, so I.
I didn't know it either, so you don't need to explain.
Excuse me, excuse me, can we maintain professionalism? Thank you. Could you ask your question, please?
Please stop interrupting me.
I have the right and authority to control this meeting, yes, but you must.
No, you can, you do not have the right to control me, Mayor. I'm, I'm through letting you control me.
Ms. Tessa, you need to do it in a professional manner, please.
So thank you for your response.
I can give a response. I, I said I am not a licensed certified public accountant, so I can't give tax advice, especially in an environment within a city environment. If you ask me my opinion, there are many ways that you can increase your basis, decrease your basis, and there are many tax deductions that come out of a sale of property, but that's not really as relevant as a city transfer fee, as we've seen in some of the neighboring cities that are quite onerous and quite expensive. And the affordability crisis is at a point where less than 16% of the people in Alameda County can afford a median aggregate price on a property. So if you want to have another conversation about this, I'll be happy to dwell into that. But at this particular venue, we're talking about going to a charter city for a prime reason here, which is a city transfer fee. And I'm expressing the opinion that for the businesses, for the community, and for the residents, and those that want to participate in the city of Pleasanton, I believe it is not a good policy to move forward on. And I thank you for my time.
Thank you very much.
If you kept within the time limit there.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, thank you.
Okay. Mike Francisco, followed by David Stark. Welcome, three minutes, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the council and city staff. Uh, I'm Mike Francisco. I'm a local real estate broker and also a fourth generation citizen of Pleasanton. My great-grandparents moved here in 1906 and built boarding homes on Angela Street and brought immigrants over from Italy to work and live here. So I've, uh, my family's been in Pleasanton for four generations. So I'm very happy to be here tonight. I'm also here tonight to oppose the, uh, the city charter to also provide a city transfer tax. And the reason I'm concerned about that is that not only in California, but in Pleasanton, we have a housing supply crisis, and we also have a housing affordability crisis. And I believe by imposing another tax on the residents of Pleasanton, including myself and my wife, uh, as residents here, that would put a undue burden on the, on the community. Also, like many residents, I support public safety. I support our police and fire department, and they keep our community safe. And they deserve stable and dependable funding. But relying on real estate transfer taxes is not the solution. The housing markets may go up and down. This kind of revenue can disappear in a slow market or a downturn, and obviously we're seeing a downturn at this time. That's now, that's not how I believe you would fund essential services. I believe Pleasanton should continue to live within its means, just as family and small businesses in our community do as well. Adding a new tax on home sales, especially during uncertain economic times, will hurt longtime residents who are downsizing and first-time homebuyers struggling with affordability. The proposal would also open the door to new taxes potentially in the future. I urge you to consider long-term consequences and the messages it sends to our Pleasanton residents. I would ask that you please consider rejecting this proposal where the, the city transfer tax is involved in the process. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, all right. David Stark, and this is my last speaker. If you would like to speak on item number 25, you would turn in a speaker card at this time. David Stark, welcome.
Good evening, I'm Mr. Mayor and city council members and staff. I'm David Stark. I'm a 26 or 27-year Pleasanton resident, I'm a homeowner as well. And I know it's been a, a long afternoon and evening for you, so I'll, I'll try to keep it within three minutes. I have a professional interest in this issue. I work for the Bay East Association of Realtors, and we will actively oppose any barriers to real estate transactions, and a real estate transfer tax is absolutely a barrier to real estate transactions. However, there's about nine more reasons why I'm engaged in this issue. As a business advocate, I was very active with the Pleasanton Chamber of Commerce. I'm not speaking on behalf of the Pleasanton Chamber of Commerce, but as a business advocate, I'm confident that, that as Mr. Francisco mentioned, we need public safety. And realistic and reasonable and reliable sources of funding are critical for public safety. And I would also reject any kind of barrier to Pleasanton workers becoming Pleasanton homeowners. As a former housing commissioner and perpetual affordable housing advocate, a transfer tax must be paid at the time of a purchase. And unless there's some financing mechanisms I'm not aware of, you can't finance the transfer tax. That's money you gotta bring to the table. It's non-negotiable, and it's actually, with due respect to staff, it's a regressive tax. And, um, it's gonna hit first-time homebuyers and lower-income buyers hard. As a political scientist, the results from the failed sales tax measure from last year are plenty of reasons why you should really think carefully about this, and frankly, a, a preview of what may be coming. As a city planner, um, any policy that could reduce real estate transactions would hurt the community and the preservation and improvement of the existing housing stock. As a resident, I want the high quality of life in Pleasanton to be built on a solid foundation and not on a foundation of, of shaky revenue sources. As a taxpayer, I don't want to pay for any costs that could lead to more land use and more housing litigation that may come from ignoring state law because we think we can ignore state law as a charter city. And frankly, as a taxpayer, I reject spending any money on polling, particularly push polling, that's not really gonna be an objective measure. As a homeowner, my neighborhood benefits when my neighbors sell their homes. I reject any barrier to, to those kinds of, uh, my neighbors not being able to, to sell their homes. As a responsible human being, I also live within my means. My wife lives within my means. The city should live within its means. And finally, I've been looking at our community of character all evening and flanking, frankly, I don't see how this transfer tax is consistent with any of those provisions. So from all those perspectives, please stop this process before it begins. Appreciate it. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you very much, okay. That includes my last public speaker card on this item. If you would like to speak on item 25, please approach the podium at this time. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for direction. Staff is asking for informal direction on how to proceed on item 25. Same order, same starting position, Vice Mayor.
There are a number of things that were mentioned during the public comment just now that I believe could also be used to make an opposite argument. I won't try and go through those now, but I have a hard time thinking that the presence of a transfer tax would keep someone from selling, or that if the tax were paid by the seller to keep a buyer from buying, because it seems to me that the market drives prices. I don't think that the market would be affected that much because, you know, people need to sell, people need to buy. The price will be the price unless the argument is made that across the board, prices of all homes that are for sale would go up. Um, you know, I, I don't, I don't see that happening. So we have to do something in regard to our structural deficit. We can't just reject things out of hand. We're being asked to move forward with exploration of a charter. I don't see anything wrong with exploring the charter, especially if we're talking about a simple charter, such as the one from San Ramon that I mentioned before. Two paragraphs of this approximately eight-paragraph charter say the city will continue to do things the same way, still be covered by a council of five members, still elect the mayor the same way. So not, everything would be changed, and it's, and, you know, it could be narrowly structured, just as we discussed earlier. So I think it's incumbent upon the council to address our city's severe structural deficit and the mounting challenges that face us in the future, and we shouldn't take anything off the table. So I support moving forward with the exploration of a, a charter.
Okay, Councilmember Gatos?
Um, I could see how if, you know, five or six years ago, you saw the direction that California was going with the state imposing mandates on local municipalities and changing the way we have local control, that a charter city would seem like a very, very good idea. And I think that's where the conversation certainly has started for this city, that that would be an attractive way to sort of get around what the state was doing with restrictions on local authority for housing. But an honest view of the progeny of cases that have proceeded through the appellate court leaves me convinced, after reading all of them in their entirety, that if a court's not gonna shut that down, as soon as they do, the legislature will pick up right behind them and fix whatever gaps there are in the court when cities are trying to kind of push that envelope to get around what the state is doing. And I, I don't necessarily think that one superior court judge in Redondo Beach gives me any confidence that one single ruling that is instantly appealed by the Attorney General of California and opposed by the governor is gonna suffer any different fate than the, the way those cases are moving. And so really, you have to ask, why would we be doing this? And while the revenue is certainly attractive, um, you know, right now, according to the math, if you sell a $1.5 million house in Pleasanton, you pay, about $825 comes back to the city. That's the way 55 cents per thousand works. And if you were to sell that same $1.5 million house in Alameda, $18,000 comes back to the city. That's a huge difference. I just want to dispel with the discussion about capital gain real quick, because I don't think it's responsible for us to sit up here and speculate or even tell anybody that it would be a benefit. The best the IRS would let you do is to say, the $18,000 that I as a seller had to pay in a transfer text, I don't, I'm not responsible for capital gain on that. But it's, you're not gonna get any further benefit than saying, I just don't, I, I'm not gaining the $18,000 I had to pay because I live in a charter city. So that's, I think we need to dispel with any idea that that is somehow a benefit to this, that it's gonna get you out of any significant capital gain tax in, in excess of what the capital gain would be on your, on your transfer tax. So that's not, I think there's no sort of there, there. I think there, there may be a time that this needs to be explored by the city, and I think we're sort of early on in that process. On the heels of, you know, an election seven or eight months ago where a sales tax measure did not pass, I'm not sure that we've done, um, the work. We've certainly gone through a, a very difficult budget process, and we've made some very critical cuts, and it may be that, uh, in the, in the course of a year or two, once folks can't go to the library on Sunday, see the change in the city services, they wanna say, hey, you know, had we had the chance to do this again, maybe we'd feel differently about it. And we wanna maybe look at other areas for revenue creation. I just, I can't, in good conscience, um, you know, under the, the assumption that the transfer tax would be the only reason we were doing it, tell the city, I think it's a good idea to spend that money to put something on the ballot that I think would fail, because I think the people are, in this city are too sophisticated to see it as anything other than, and I, I think as the mayor pointed out, people maybe say, they, it may be that a charter would pass, but I don't think a transfer tax would pass. And we'd be setting ourselves up to sort of win the battle and lose the war for, for that. And to, to spend the money and frankly, the staff time to, to do this when we have other things we've talked about tonight for which we don't have staff time for that, um, we go, I, I just, I don't think it would, it would result, I just frankly don't think it has any chance of passing. It, currently, I think that this may be a different conversation in a year or 18 months once the ramifications of our budget and the cuts that we've had to make have gone But I, I just don't know that we're there yet, and, you know, we're, we're barely getting our feet wet here as a new council. And we're, I don't think we've had enough distance from, you know, what, what the narrative was during the last election. Now, I, I can say I supported Measure PP because I knew essentially this was gonna happen. But it also, it's not passing has provided us an opportunity to tighten up, to look at things, and I think we've made some good decisions in the right way. But again, with the amount of staff time it would take and the amount of money it would take to explore it, um, I don't see it as, as a wise use of resources. I will say, I did email the city manager and the city attorney, although very late in the game, to shape what I think would be maybe a reasonable discussion about it, because it, it just sort of disfavors people who happen to be selling their house at any time. And it, and it shouldn't disfavor people that have owned their house for a long time. If you're flipping houses, maybe that should be a different conversation if, um, and, you know, maybe it should apply to certain people and not others. I don't know what the parameters of that are, um, but I, I don't want to, if you're, you know, your family has owned a house here for a long time, or you've put a lot into it, disincentivize someone from, from selling their house. You know, I, I'd be a massive revenue gain for the city in excess of what I think Measure PP would have brought if we, if we even do the conservative transfer tax. But I just can't justify supporting, moving forward and using the staff time and the money. And I know that's the third time I've said that, to, to, to explore something that I think has a 0% chance of, of, of passing. If you had asked me four years ago whether I thought this is a good idea in the wake of what I consider to be uninformed, cookie cutter, leftist-driven housing policies in this state, I'd be telling you a completely different answer. But with the benefit of being a practicing attorney and reading all those appellate cases and seeing the direction that they're going, I just don't see that it brings us any tangible benefit other than the ability to ask our voters for a transfer tax that I don't think would pass in November of 2026. So that's my position right now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Iker?
I don't know if I could keep up after, after your statement. I, I do want to thank Julie Testa, Councilmember Testa, for, uh, asking to have this brought before us, because I, I think the ability to look at it and understand the differences between a charter city and a general law city are important. And I think exploring the aspect of, of the rights of a charter city and the rights of a general law city to see if, if that would benefit us in regards to housing, um, I think that was, that was wise to look at that aspect of it, because if there were ways we could get around some of the impositions the state was putting on, or continues to put on, uh, I, I think it's important to understand that and act accordingly in the best interests of our community. Understanding now where we're at and seeing that there's really the only benefit of, or at least from what my perspective is, the only benefit of becoming a charter city is the potential for a real property tax or a transfer tax. And I don't think that's gonna solve everything, because I think, uh, uh, like David Stark said, I think you're gonna see fluctuations in, uh, the market, which is gonna modify that funding that comes to the city if we did go down that path. And I think the fluctuations could take the city by surprise if we have a, a market that's not, uh, hopping out there, which means that revenue isn't gonna be coming in. I think there's other means in which we can, uh, develop revenues for our community. I think, to be honest with you, I think this methodology is. this methodology is far worse than the sales tax. I think the sales tax would have been a better model than going after a transfer tax on homeowners. I think it does create a barrier to entry into the housing market, which will reduce the turnover in our community and will affect long-term homeowners the most. Personally, I'm not in favor, absent seeing any real reason to move forward, other than the tax purposes. The interesting thing is, is the, the 6% that's proposed by staff, the tax that we, that the seller would be paying isn't 6%. It's 7.1%, because they would still owe 1.1% to the county. You know, because we're no longer splitting that, they get the whole amount. So the amount you're paying is actually higher than the 6%. you know, I, I think it's important to understand the, the impacts to our community. And this really puts that tax burden on the residents of Pleasanton. Where I, again, I said, I, I think there's other means of getting there. I would absolutely support increasing our temporary occupancy tax in the future. I think that, though it won't bring in as much money, it will still be one of many methodologies in which we're addressing the budget, you know, because you need to increase in certain areas and decrease in others to make your budget. As Mr. Stark said, it's about living within your means. And I think we can, we can address those issues as we move forward. So with that, I'm not in favor of moving forward.
Okay, Councilmember Testa?
There are a lot of different reasons to be a charter city. And it is not locked in the, the transfer tax. I, I feel it's unfortunate that that was identified as the primary, because it was not reason for exploring becoming a charter city. A charter city gives a city a lot of autonomy. And while the courts aren't currently favoring the cities to be in a position to act if things shift, would be a good thing. As far as the transfer tax, you know, I really, I, I wonder what you're, I mean, we know TOT is really the only other identified option. And that is nowhere near the amount that's needed to to bridge our budget deficit. As far as living within our means, we just went through a process of what the loses when we cut programs. And we eliminated one, one employee position in this city. And it made the front page of the East Bay Times that we were laying off. That's really what it would take. It would take a lot of reduction in employee costs, because employee costs are the majority of our budget. So the TOT is not going to bridge that transfer occupancy tax. As far as the issue of, I, I'll tell you, when I heard that we could use 30% of the expense of the transfer tax to offset capital gains, I thought, you know, I'm not looking forward to the capital gains when we sell our home. It's, it's a big hit. And 30% of that isn't a lot compared to what most of us will pay in capital gains at some point. But it's not nothing. And it does, when I read the discussions online about the opposition to the transfer tax, it was the losing that amount as we are retiring and downsizing our homes. And, you know, that's not nothing to have part of it offsetting the capital gains. It, it makes the amount, amount less. I, I hear a lot of naysayers. I hear a lot of hysterics and, you know, a half-cent sales tax, which would have averaged a total of about $125 per an average Pleasanton resident per year. And that was, that was, created panic. I, again, I, I wasn't looking at a transfer tax when I asked to have this discussion, but I applaud our staff for looking at ways to help us get out of our deficit. A deficit that is really caused by our unsustainable pensions that have been growing for decades and aren't going to stop for another decade. So I absolutely would support going forward with exploring a charter city. A charter city, becoming a charter city does not mandate or automatically equate to a transfer tax, even though I don't think the transfer tax would be, I think it would be a good thing for the city. It would really help. It would really solve our fiscal issue. But, so that's, yeah, I support pursuing Pleasanton becoming a charter city.
Okay, thank you. Steph, a quick question I have is, I recall the amount of polling from the sales tax. It talked about, you know, likelihood of passing and then likelihood of, based upon opposition or not. Clearly, we have a declared opposition on this. So what is, is it 51%? It's, it's 50 plus one for this to pass? If it was to go forward?
Correct, simple majority.
Simple majority, okay. I just wanted to clarify that. I apologize, I can't remember if this was on that list of all of those different revenue enhancing things. There was like several different versions that we looked at. Yeah, okay, I didn't, I didn't think so.
Not at that time.
Yeah, thank you for that clarifying. Okay. Well, thank you for the conversation. I guess I see it as, this is a, to me, and maybe just to me, but I see this as a major governmental shift. I mean, going from a general law city to potentially a charter city doesn't sound to be done lightly, in, in my opinion, at all. And it does sound, based on the housing law conversation, it does sound like it's now principally as a financial tool. And what concerns me is even if that tool is one that we desired, it is not guaranteed. So I think the arc of Pleasanton's conversation right now, from, from my perspective, and I guess I'm speaking as mayor's, we, we have just passed a balanced budget. In that budget, we have laid out, put in motion streamlining our, our processes, our permitting, combining economic development and community development, and, and focused on looking at how we can enhance our downtown, enhance our mall, and basically shine Pleasanton up to be an attractive place to do business. So I think we are with our community talking about that. And to me, doing this at this time seems premature to see if any of those energies and efforts bear fruit. There's definitely a budget challenge. I've already mentioned that we will need to be fiscally prudent for many years to come. But I'm also very interested, because CalPERS has announced better-than-expected results. And so, you know, all these variables go into the process, and this is there by government. If it was the way to the promised land, I'm surprised that we're not one of several hundred cities converting to charter. It just doesn't seem like they've done it. And I'm very worried about unintended consequences. I've seen it happen. So I, I personally worry we're creating a false expectation of a solution that really diverts us away from the groundwork we've put in place for economic growth in Pleasanton. It doesn't mean that we shouldn't find other solutions. So I will, again, verbally and, and signal from the dais, I personally think we should look at what other options exist, whether that's a hotel transfer tax. There will never be a silver bullet. There will never be one solution. To me, the way it comes together is a little bit from different places that come together for the whole pie. And so I think this council has done tremendous work with city staff support to come up with a balanced budget that reflects our values, refocuses our priorities, and has a community conversation related to what we expect next. And, and we think it's economic growth. At least, I, I believe that at this time. So I cannot support doing this at this time. I don't want to preclude that being from other options available, so at least I'm going to signal that to my fellow councilmembers and staff. I think a conversation related to other options should, should continue. And obviously, with the intent of preserving services and amenities for our residents and businesses to make Pleasanton an amazing city. So with that, that concludes.
I'd like to make final comments, please.
Okay. Okay, so no problem. We'll go around again. So this is, from what I'll take, it's 3-2 in opposition and proceeding with it at this time. So we'll go for final comments around. Vice Mayor, we'll just go in the same order. So Vice Mayor, final comments?
Yeah, for heaven's sake. I don't know what people are talking about up here. You know, yes, we have a balanced budget. The balanced budget that we have doesn't do enough. Far from it. As I wrote in my column in the Weekly last week, the, you know, we're kicking the can down the road on our pension situation. We have a terrible infrastructure situation facing us. We need to solve the structural deficit. We're not going to get out of the structural deficit by just saying, oh, there's going to be economic growth and rely on that. It's happened, you know, years down the road. You know, five, six, seven, eight, 10 years down the road. I don't see any unintended consequences coming from having a charter that just limits it to implementing a transfer tax. You know, being fiscally prudent, yes, we have to be fiscally prudent. That's not a panacea either. I mean, it's irresponsible not to put the best interests of the community ahead of us as a reason for attacking the structural deficit. Attacking the deficit is in the best interest of the community. I mean, there are very few options for us to do this. Time is of the essence here. You know, we can't wait. As far as the transfer tax itself, I don't see it as a barrier to entry. You know, if, you know, sellers pay the sales tax, you know, it's subject to market conditions. And long-term homeowners, they're already going to be well compensated from the gains from their sale. Many longtime homeowners in Pleasanton are sitting on a windfall. And they're certainly not going to decide not to sell when it's time to sell because of a transfer tax. You know, for many of them, it'll be the only time they sell the house while they're in Pleasanton. So, I mean, if you're, if you're afraid of what the state might do in terms of passing laws to take away the ability of charter cities to implement a transfer tax, then you know, if such a thing were to happen, the, all the cities that currently have transfer taxes would lose the source of revenue, too. No state law is going to take that huge source of revenue away from all 126 charter cities. And, you know, living within your means, I've heard that said a couple times tonight. Those who are saying we should live within our means, and I believe we've heard that during the sales tax discussion last year. And I believe that the voters of Pleasanton, by voting against Measure PP, were telling the city to live within their means. But if we're saying that now, we should be willing to look at any resident in the eye and tell them that what's important to them is not important to you. So So, and of course, the people that spoke against it tonight, you know, they all have one thing in common, they're all in the real estate industry. So, of course, the real estate industry is going to be against this. There's no doubt about that. We should have the courage to stand up to that and do what's right for the citizens of Pleasanton. As far as fluctuations go, I mean, sources of revenue will fluctuate over time. Sales tax fluctuates over time, depending on economic conditions. Whether, you know, the market goes up or down for housing, of course you have fluctuations. But we're talking like $7 to $19 million potentially, depending on how the transfer tax is structured. I mean, we're not talking fluctuating all the way down to zero. I mean, that's, you know, big money. And the situation that the city finds itself in right now with a structural deficit, I say it again, a structural deficit, that doesn't mean that, you know, we're going to pass these budgets that borrow from one-time money, year after year after year, and solve the structural deficit. Those costs will keep going up. So I do not see any reason not to proceed with exploring. We're only talking about exploring the situation. And saying that you think it's going to fail now is not, you know, saying that's going to fail. Whether or not it would pass in 18 months is not a good, you know, reason to not explore it. I mean, yeah, okay, if I think it's going to fail, why not explore it? I mean, it may not be that way. I mean, I just don't see me, if I had that position, substituting my judgment for the residents of Pleasanton. And that's what it feels like to me. So I'll be quiet now.
Okay. Councilmember Gatos, do you have any final closing comments?
I don't want to belabor or just keep going back and forth, but I just, I don't see a lot of benefits beyond the possibility of establishing a transfer tax. And I don't think that that will be successful, or the chances that will be successful enough to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars and lots of staff time to pursue it. So I think that would be an irresponsible path to truck forward at this time. I agree with a lot of what Councilmember Nybert just said theoretically and in my heart. You know, my heart doesn't really bleed for the real estate business. I'm not in the real estate business. I think that houses will continue to sell in Pleasanton, independent of a transfer tax. I don't think it'll have a super negative ability. I just don't think any, that the voters are going to see it anything other than another tax. And I don't think, as currently situated now, seven months behind a measure that didn't pass, that it's a good use of staff time and resources and city money to pursue it. So, and absent of other benefits, that's my position. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Iker, any comments?
I don't have any additional comments.
Councilmember Tessa?
Albany, City Berkeley, Emeryville, Hayward, Oakland, Piedmont, San Leandro, El Cerrito, Richmond, 135 cities across the state have become charter cities. So, and you know what? I've never heard of any unexpected consequences. And Councilmember Nybert, you stole everything I was going to say? Because balanced budget, I'm tired of hearing we have a balanced budget because it doesn't mean anything. Because every city that's gone bankrupt has had a balanced budget the year before they went bankrupt. Why? Because we have to. It doesn't mean that we fixed the problem. To pretend that we fixed the problem because we've got a balanced budget is an illusion. And certain, if the economy is soft, our primary revenue is sales, property tax. Property tax ebbs and flows with our economy. So if there was a transfer tax that ebbed and flowed, it wouldn't, it wouldn't change. Again, I don't think the transfer tax is the reason to become a charter city. I think there's a lot of reasons to become a charter city, and there's really no reasons not to. If we pursued a transfer tax outside, alongside, or after becoming a charter city, I don't think that would be a bad thing. Again, Councilmember Nybert is absolutely right. We have to do something. To say that there are other solutions without identifying those solutions, a $2 million a year transfer, TOT occupancy tax is, temporary occupancy tax, is not going to solve, fix our situation. So I appreciate Councilmember Nybert's comments, and I absolutely think that we should continue to pursue. I wish that everyone had the courage, all the cities would have the courage to come together to stand up to the overreach that the state is imposing on our cities. By the way, the most recent Senate Bill 79 is getting pretty close to passing for this season's worst bill. It could put seven-story buildings all over Pleasanton, anywhere within a half mile of a bus stop or BART or ACE train. Seven-story buildings all over Pleasanton. That's the kind of overreach the state is imposing on our cities. We should have local authority to make those decisions. All right. I support going forward.
Okay, thank you. So on a 3-2, the motion will not go forward, and we are concluded with item number 25.
Mayor, if I might, just because I think it's important for where we go from here, is there an interest from the council in bringing back or getting into contract with a consultant to do some polling for November 2026 around revenue measure options? Or is that a no-go with the council? Because, well, it's not agendized. It is something that we were planning for August and September, and based on what I'm hearing tonight, there may not be an appetite for that kind of polling. And I just don't want to spend the staff time if we're not going to pursue a November 2026 ballot item. And I can agendize it, you know, to have that conversation before we go there, if you'd like to do it that way. I don't want to put anybody on the spot tonight.
I, thank you. And yeah, I think we would must, we must agendize that separately. That's a different conversation. Clearly, at this point, you have a 3-2 vote to, or 3-2 straw poll to not go with the charter city item. But why don't we agendize that conversation, not necessarily engage if, and then we can have a full and frank conversation, our community can be aware of it. Okay. All right. Thank you. That concludes item number 25. We'll move to item number 26 on our agenda. We're just humming along. Establish an ad hoc subcommittee of the city council to review the city's commission and committee structure and appointment, appoint two members of the city council to serve. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let me pull up, and I have one slide for you. This will be very brief, and I will chat with you while I bring it up.
Can I, can I go, Heidi, while you pull it up? So, you know, following along, this is an outcome of the budget conversation that we just wrapped up. We're implementing the budget in a number of different areas, and this is an example of fewer staff people being able to continue to carry the commission and committee volume that we currently have. Some of you may remember, maybe all of you remember, that we did start this conversation, have this conversation. We completed it about a year and a half ago, give or take. And we didn't make it very far at the time in terms of consolidation and reduction, but we are at a point now, based on staffing levels, where we have to have it again. So I'm going to turn it over to Director Murphy to ask for your help.
Great, thank you. So we are here tonight based on our budget decisions. We have lost several key positions associated with commission work. We've also eliminated some of the programs and services that commissions helped us with before. So it seems prudent to have another ad hoc subcommittee to review the city's commission and committee structure. So we are asking you tonight to, A, establish an ad hoc subcommittee to review the commission and committee structure. Secondarily, to appoint two council members to serve on this ad hoc subcommittee. And then we are asking for a limited fall commission recruitment, to only recruit for those positions necessary to maintain a quorum while we do the ad hoc subcommittee review, and then we'll do a full recruitment in the spring. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. That concludes your presentation. Same order, different starting position. Councilmember Gatos, any questions?
None.
Councilmember Iker?
No questions.
Councilmember Tessa?
No questions.
Council, Vice Mayor?
Well, yeah, my question has to do with why. I mean, you alluded to briefly in what you just said, we addressed this before. So why do we want to look at the structure again at this time? I mean, we're looking at, we're looking at resources, we're looking at dollar savings. Can you tell me?
Yes, all of that. So, for example, I'll use the Library and Recreation Department. We have five commissions that are housed in our department, and we have, through this budget process, lost a library manager, a human services manager, and an office manager. All three of those positions were tied to commissions. We've also stopped the community grant program, which was a huge piece of what the Human Services Commission did, and a huge piece of what the Civic Arts Commission did. So it seems like a prudent time, we talked about it during the budget process, that we would have to pause these commissions if we were to remove these positions. And so we want to make sure that we have commissions that reflect council's direction and also reflect what the community needs, but the work that we're doing together. So it's a good time to reevaluate, look at what commissions maybe should be merged, maybe if a commission could convert to a more efficient process in some ways, and really looking at how that work is going to get done.
So you mentioned, in response to my question, yes, dollar savings and resource savings.
Correct.
Are those dollar savings coming just from resource savings, or how do we get...
The dollar and resource savings, we've already captured through the budget. Now we just need to figure out how we're going to do that work.
So you're talking about rightsizing the amount of work to, you know, whatever the requirements end up being.
And the new staffing level. Yeah. Yeah, and I think that's, there's a lot of budget implementation work that's going to impact. I mean, the council saw it this time around, we have to improve it for you all, but you saw your packet was basically a PDF dropped through the machine, which, you know, has implications for how you process the work that you do. And the central services is going away out of the clerk's office. We have fewer people in library and recreation, so we're looking at commissions and committees. Library hours are getting rolled out. So you're going to see, over the next three to six months, I think a continued, you know, rollout implications of the budget reductions.
Okay, that's all. Thanks.
Okay. I don't have any questions. I do have a speaker card. Any further questions before I open public comment? Seeing none, public comment? At this time, if you'd like to speak on item 26, please fill out a blue speaker card. My first and only speaker is Mr. Todd Nelson. Trifecta for you tonight, I believe.
I know.
Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Thank you for staying up. It's not bad. You said 11:30. I'm here to speak in favor of committees and commissions. I think they're wonderful things for the community. I've been involved in one directly, but engaged with a couple of others. I think it's a good opportunity, as most of this council and most of past councils that I've ever seen came up through the committee and commission structures. I also think that the city of Pleasanton is just full of very talented people who make a lot of money, and that's why they live here, and they're very good at what they do. A lot of them are consultants that you'd probably pay tens of thousands of dollars to get their advice, and they're volunteering for your committees and commissions for free. My personal experience is probably not valid across all the committees and commissions, but I proposed a dozen things as future topics for meetings that I thought would be beneficial to the city council to hear. The, a large number of them would not require any additional staff time. They were speakers from outside sources. And my observation is, it seems like over time, the city council, to a lesser extent, staff, is not as interested in hearing from the public as they used to be. You've reduced the number of members on the committee, which shouldn't affect staff. You've reduced the frequency of meetings, which I understand, but you're not getting the feedback from the committees. Once you went to action management, you stopped hearing any of the comments. What you're hearing is filtered through staff. You're not hearing from the public. And I think that's a disservice. I think there probably are ways, and this community is filled with people who are very good at this, of having more efficient ways of running these meetings and getting things accomplished. I appreciate the staff time involved. I'm not trying to say that that's not warranted. It is a significant thing. But I do think they could be better, and they could be expanded, not reduced. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any additional speakers for item number 26? Please approach the podium at this time. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Councilmember Gatos, you're up first this time.
I don't have a lot to say. If there's, you know, three of us who think this is a good idea and two of us who want to do it, I'd like to hear what everyone else has to say about that.
I think we should move forward in finding a way to make this work.
Yeah, we're trying to figure out who wants to serve, so maybe we start with that. So, okay, Councilmember Tessa?
Trying to figure out which.
We need two people, so I'm just trying to find the two people.
Okay, I'm one. I'd love to do it. So the, how many, how many employees do we have in the city?
I don't know if Xavier Scoggins is still here. I'll get you the exact number. I want to give you the bright number.
I don't need the exact number. 450?
A little, a little better than 450, including the, all the firefighters.
Okay. And, and we've, we've laid off one employee, and that was unfortunate, but we've laid off one out of 450. So, yeah, I'm happy to be on the ad hoc committee.
Okay. Council, Vice Mayor?
As I recall, last year when this came before the council, you know, the ad hoc committee took quite some time to come up with a recommendation for the council, and in the end, the council approved it in part and rejected it in part. You know, I could, you know, I could foresee that happening again. I could foresee the council rejecting it entirely. I could say, you know, because I think the council's not going to approve it, I don't want to go forward with it. But I'm not going to say that. I think that's absurd. So I will go forward with it.
Okay. I served on the last one with Councilmember Arkin, former Arkin. I think it actually would be good if it was a different perspective in light of that. We had talked about Phase Two, I guess I'll say it, and there was a plan, but it probably would be good that it's a different set of eyes on it. So I'm going to bow out, but we're looking for a second member. Iker, you want to serve? You're retired, so that's why I'm taking on you.
I can, if nobody else wants to be involved.
I move Councilmember Tessa and Councilmember Iker serve on the ad hoc committee. Looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Gatos. We have a motion made and seconded. Any further comment? It's like, who doesn't, who wants the job, and everyone steps back except the person that's... Okay, roll call, vote, please.
Mayor Balch?
Aye.
Councilmembers Gatos?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Nybert?
Aye.
Tessa?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Excellent. That concludes item 26. Moving on to matters initiated by council, are there any matters initiated at this time? Seeing none, council reports, if we can be brief in light of the hour. We'll start down at the end. Councilmember Gatos?
As far as things to report?
Yep.
Yeah, we have...
It's been a month.
A Stop Waste meeting last Thursday. I think that's the only one that I am absolutely required to report, and also one on the 25th of June. Great stuff coming out of Stop Waste, lots of stuff to share on social media, and lots to learn there, and I'm happy to be a part of it. That's all I have to report.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
On Friday, June 20th, I attended the ABAG General Assembly in San Francisco. You know, it's an annual meeting. Just one nugget that I took from that, in terms of pension difficulties that all agencies are facing, ABAG has not employed anyone since 2017. And yet, pensions for former employees, contributions to CalPERS, take up 72% of all the member dues for ABAG.
Matt, you look confused. It's because the MTC did a hostile takeover, and they took over the revenue and left behind the debt with...
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Really ugly.
Yeah, ABAG went to a situation where MTC was doing a lot of the work that previous ABAG employees did back in 2017. Of course, Lions Wayside Park, ribbon cutting. Let's see. Where else have I gone to? Community, no. Mosquito abatement meeting. On the 9th, the 80s gypsy mosquito that had infested Pleasanton has not been found in several months here in Pleasanton, based on trapping that's been done. So that is looking good. Concert in the park, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Tessa?
Okay, let's see. Let's see, I had an IGATE meeting, I had, oh, let's see, several Lofta meetings, wheels bus meetings, and I have been elected unanimously as chair for Lofta. And, let's see, I attended a, oh, gosh, I'm hoping, oh, Wayside Park, what a wonderful ribbon cutting. That is such a lovely park. We're so lucky to have it. Matt, he did such a great job for us. Let's see, I went to, what, no, not that. Well, the best thing I did was I got a new grandbaby yesterday, so, yoo!
Congratulations.
All right, that's it.
Okay. Councilmember Iker?
June 18th, I attended a badge painting at the PD for three new officers. June 23rd, Lofta Projects and Services Committee meeting. June 24th, LPFD, Joint Powers Association meeting. June 27th, ribbon cutting at Lions Wayside Park. On July 7th, another Lofta board meeting. And July 11th, I attended the concerts in the park sponsored by the city of Pleasanton.
Okay, thank you. On, just on the required, on June 18th, Ava Community Energy Board meeting, passed their budget. They also put forward a $2.5 billion green bond that they will take to market, that will save customers an average of $22 million a year on their energy costs. ACTC Board meeting related to train intersection upgrades throughout Alameda County. They're spending $11 million throughout the county. We don't get any of it because we don't have any fatalities at any of our train-street Loftco met, Reeman Track, as the city manager mentioned, and Merritt are in their scope of work for Loftco. And ACTC Programming Committee meeting yesterday, related also to trains and other elements. I will mention, and it is, should be a source of pride for our entire community, that the very first musical event in our Lions Wayside Bandstand Park was our own community concert band on 4th of July. So if that's not Americana, I don't know what might be. And with that, Councilmember Tessa, can you take us out?
The Pleasanton City Council adjourns this meeting with a tribute to our nation's men and women serving in the military, and with gratitude for every US State, United States veteran who has bravely answered the call to serve. Further, we wish to honor the memories of those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in conflicts both past and present in defense of our country.
Thank you. We are adjourned.